Good evening and thank you for joining our school committee meeting of Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. As you can see, a couple of us are meeting here in person. The rest of the committee is, has joined us by Zoom. And we're going to call the meeting to order and start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I'm going to read the mission statement like we do every week, or every meeting. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next on the agenda is public comment. We had one person contact us ahead of time. Erin Kresos is, should be in the audience.
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Erin. Thanks.
Perfect. Hopefully just me and not the feisty toddler running around in the background.
No worries.
Thank you all for having me here. I am Erin Kresos. As many of you know, I'm a teacher in the district and a proud mom of a first grader at the Woodville. I'd like to clarify that I'm here today strictly as an invested community member, speaking only on my own behalf and not on behalf of any colleagues or groups that I may be affiliated with. For the last few months, I've watched the community spiral into a concerning amount of vitriol and divisiveness over the logo issue. While I could spend my time this evening describing a variety of examples, I feel we should refuse as an educational community to grant any more time or power to the negativity. Our time together is better spent looking at the positive work that our students and our teachers do every single day, especially in such a challenging year. We hear a lot about learning loss and the need to ensure we're providing enough support and high-quality education for our students. As teachers, we work tirelessly to ensure all of our students receive these educational experiences and exposures they deserve. From pre-K through 12, we teach our students how to communicate effectively, to read and write with a desire for evidence and support. We teach them skills and content to allow them to grow into well-rounded human beings. We teach our students to always act with genuine respect for human dignity. We teach our students that it is okay to make mistakes and that these mistakes are simply opportunities for growth and never opportunities for ridicule or shame. Lastly, we teach our students to stand for their beliefs and do what is right even when no one is looking and even when it is hard. Though our children may falter, as human beings often do, they continue to provide one of the greatest glimmers of hope we all desperately need in these difficult times. Our students continue to amaze us, especially myself, every day. As a parent, I am constantly inspired by my young son's desire for understanding and the constant compassion he grants everyone he meets. I am in awe of our students' desire to learn and engage in respectful, honest, and meaningful debate. Each day, our students and our children learn a new skill to better their chances of success and model how we should all approach our future with integrity, compassion, and dedication. My job as a parent and as an educator is never to stifle this desire and passion to do the right thing, but rather to help our students and our children grow as individuals to become the true leaders in this town that we know they can be. As we welcome new committee members today, I offer some suggestions for you to consider as you move forward. The committee needs to commit to telling our teachers that you hear and value their work, efforts, and feedback. You need to support the work that we do every day so we can continue to support our students. This committee needs to not only acknowledge the needs of our students, but also their strengths and the diversity that they offer our community. It needs to commit to working with one another and with our teachers and administration to grow our educational program for the future. Lastly, while the pressure to speak for a few may be strong, please remember that you have committed to acting for everyone and to acting for all. Your most important work is to support our schools by supporting our teachers and our students, and it is imperative that you never lose sight of this goal no matter what happens. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thanks, Erin. Do we have anybody else on the, on the Zoom that wanted to speak? We, WCAT folks, we can't see if anybody's raising their hand, so I'm going to assume that you guys would tell us if there's anybody. Okay. Looks like we're okay. I will move on then to the Student Advisory Comment. Or, yeah, Student Advisory Council. Do we have any of the members from the Student Advisory Council on? Okay.
Hi.
I can't see who that is.
I think that's Maggie.
Maggie, okay. Maggie, you can go ahead and, and give us an update if you'd like. I know Maggie's connection is sometimes.
There you go. That's better.
There we go, Maggie.
Okay. So, we have students in grades nine through 11 got their course verification forms for next year, right before vacation during advisory. So, most students are getting them, I think via mail. Yeah. And if you don't want, don't wish to make any changes, you don't need to return the form. If you do wish to request any overrides, any changes, the student should fill out the bottom of this form and return to the guidance office by Friday, April 30th. And then, just another note, Monday, May 3rd, all WNIT students who are currently full day, fully schooled will be following the same bell schedule as you have been.
Great. Thanks, Maggie. Liam, do you have an update for us? It's good to see you. It's been a few meetings.
Hi. I can go next, so.
Logan, not Liam. Logan, sorry. Jeez.
On Monday, our spring sports started. So, some of the sports are boys and girls lacrosse, baseball, softball, boys and girls tennis, wrestling, cheerleading, and boys and girls track. I think that may be it. And speaking of tennis, the tennis team is having a fundraiser at Chipotle in Redding on Tuesday, May 4th, from 4 to 8. And anyone interested in supporting the tennis team, then just reach out to Ms. McLeod or someone on the tennis team and get the flyer so they can show the workers at Chipotle.
Great. Committee members, any questions for Logan or Maggie? Are you guys excited about getting back to school five days a week?
Excited.
Very excited. Okay. All right. I think that's everybody from the Student Advisory. Nobody, none of the committee members had questions, so we'll, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Tom, are you prepared to read motions?
I move the school committee approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of March 23, 2021, and the minutes of the school committee public budget hearing of March 18, 2021, and accept the minutes of the school committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meetings of March 11, 2021, April 1, 2021, and April 15, 2021, and the minutes of the School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee meeting of April 9, 2021, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? So, on this one, I think you, Tom, Mr. Markham, me, and Mike may be the only people who can vote on this because the other four committee members were not committee members when these meetings took place. Does that feel right, Mr. Markham?
So, it feels right, except that's not a majority of the committee.
I know it's not.
They can't approve minutes as such. I, I think, I think that unless the, if any of the committee members are uncomfortable, the new committee members are uncomfortable, then maybe we give them a chance to read the minutes and, and take this up at the next meeting and ask everyone to.
To weigh in.
To weigh in at that time. Because we can't approve them without a majority.
Without a quorum, or, yeah, with a majority, without a majority. Okay. So, committee members, new committee members, do you feel like you guys need some more time to read through those so that you could feel comfortable asking questions of the three of us who might have insight before you were to approve it? Do we want to wait and, and make that motion next meeting?
Yeah, as long as you don't have questions for the policy committee minutes, because nobody's on the school committee that was on the policy committee, subcommittee.
We could go to Doug on that.
Do my best. Sure. Absolutely. I think we got it covered.
Okay. So, so we're going to hold off and, and revisit those for the next meeting. Okay. So, that comes to the chair's comments. There, we don't currently have a chair, but I'm acting as the chair. So, first, which I really should have started the meeting with, was welcome new members, which is kind of, I guess, obvious, which is why I didn't say it. But, welcome new members. Looking, it's nice to see you on Zoom, but it'll be much nicer to see you in person when we, when we can finally make that happen. But, we did want to just talk a little bit about, we have on here introductions. I, I guess we could take a couple of minutes to have each of you kind of introduce yourselves quickly. Hopefully, everybody knows kind of who you are. But why don't we go ahead and, and do that? And then, we'll talk a little bit about the school committee reorganization, talk a little bit about subcommittee roles and opportunities, and then we'll talk a little bit about professional development. So, why don't we start with introductions? Kevin, if you want to go first?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Suzy. Privileged to be here and so happy to, to be here, at least even on Zoom. My name is Kevin Piscadlo, and I was elected yesterday to complete the term that had been started by Chris Callanan for the next two years. Look forward to being on the committee. In addition to my role here, that I'm now assuming I work at Stonehill College as Vice President of Students. And, yeah, just really looking forward to getting going and working on all the topics that we talked about over the last several months that the school committee's been working so hard on over the last year.
Great. Thanks, Kevin. WCAT friends, could you guys turn the volume up a little bit in here? It's a little bit difficult to hear the, the speakers, so if you could do that. Stephen, do you want to go next?
Yes, thank you. Stephen Ingles. I was elected to a three-year seat on the school committee. Really excited to be here and looking forward to the work. I'm a Woodville parent with two small kids in the district, but really looking forward to sort of being a voice for, for our community and being an advocate for the teachers and students.
Great. Thanks, Stephen. Amy Lehman?
Hi. Thank you, Suzy. Hello, everyone. I'm Amy Lehman. Happy to be here. It's been many a time I've been on the other side. So, it's nice to be on this side and I'm able to help. If anyone needs anything, feel free to reach out, and I appreciate all the votes and the support these past few weeks. Thank you.
And Amy Wall?
Hi. Thanks, Suzy. Like everybody said, thank you for having us and voting us in. This is a really great opportunity to get our feet wet and to hit the ground running. So, I'm excited to learn from people and, and be a voice for people that want to have their voices heard. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, guys. So, so the next item on the agenda is, every year at this time, the school committee goes through a reorganization and nominates and votes on new, a new chairperson, a new vice chair, and the payroll signer. So, that process, Tom, Mr. Markham walked me through today, and, and hopefully I'm going to get this right. So, we, the, the bylaws say, or the rules say that you start with, with the chair. So, I'm going to ask if there is anyone who wants to nominate someone to be the chairperson. Mr. Markham?
I would like to nominate Susie Vair, excuse me, Susie Vair, as, as the next chairperson.
Thank you. So, typically, I would ask if you accept the nomination. So, I'm going to say I accept the nomination. Does anybody else have?
I need a second.
Oh, I need a second. Thank you.
Second.
Oh. Did we need the second before I accepted it? Okay. We got it.
We got it.
Okay. Second, accepted. Does anybody else have nominations for the chairperson? Okay. So, if there's no more nominations, that we can just go to vote on that, right? Roll call vote. Judy?
Ms. Vair, well, do I ask you, Suzy? No.
Yes.
I think you do. I get to vote for myself.
I still do. Okay. Ms. Vair?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I look forward to sitting in the seat and, and acting as the chairperson this year. Next up would be, is there anyone who wants to make a nomination for the vice chair position?
I will nominate Tom Markham for the vice chairman position.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Kevin. Mr. Markham, do you accept that nomination?
I do. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for vice chair? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote for that.
Ms. Vair?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wall?
No.
Okay. The final role is the payroll signer, which, just for the rest of the committee to know, because I don't know that you, that people know what this is. Actually, you know what, Christine? I'm going to let you tell everybody what this role is, if you don't mind.
Of course. So, at every meeting, well, every monthly meeting, you're presented with the monthly payrolls and accounts payable vendor warrants. So, you will vote as a group, but then someone has to come into the office or at the meeting, attach a wet signature to all of the payrolls for, to make sure everyone's paid and for the vendor payroll, for the accounts payable warrants. So, it's for both, not just payrolls, it's for accounts payables.
So, do we have a nomination for the role of the payroll signer and the warrant signer? Mr. Markham?
I would nominate Mr. Boudreau.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Kevin. Mr. Boudreau, Michael, would you accept that nomination?
Who wouldn't want to sign the checks? Of course.
Thanks, Mike.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we'll do the roll, roll call vote. Judy?
Ms. Vair?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think we've completed the agenda item called School Committee Reorganization. I thought I'd just talk a little bit about the subcommittee roles. We have a lot of open spots for our subcommittees. And so, we're going to want to kind of quickly get those filled so that we can get our meetings kind of back up and running and going because there's important business still to be, to be dealt with. So, my goal was to just talk quickly about the four committees, and then my intention was to have a conversation with each of you over the next few days to get kind of what your preferences would be so that then I can do kind of the puzzle mapping of kind of where, where people sit and what makes sense, what, you know, what will work best. So, the, the four subcommittees are Finance and Facilities, Labor Relations, Student Services, and the Policy and Communications Subcommittee. And so, each of, I think they're relatively straightforward in kind of the way that they're named. But we can certainly talk a little bit more about what each of those committees kind of entails. But I think, you know, Finance and Facilities is obviously focused on budget and, and anything facilities-related, which would include a lot of discussion around the high school, the new high school. The Policy and Communications is just that, right? So, focused on when new policies need to be created, and we added Communications as a secondary piece of that subcommittee, I think maybe a year ago, or maybe even two years ago. So, that one, I think, is pretty straightforward. The Student Services focuses on just that, right? Really looking at kind of students and what they need and, and making sure that we have a good sense of what's happening with, with our students and where they need additional supports. There's an element of that around special ed. There's an element of that around social, emotional learning. And then, the fourth one is Labor Relations, which is really about our, kind of our relationship with the WEA, the Wakefield, the local Wakefield Teachers Union. And so, I think the goal, like I said, is for me to just hear from you which ones of those sound interesting, and then I'll do the kind of figuring things out, and, and then we'll get going. I, I will say that typically, those meetings had, the subcommittee meetings were happening at 8:00 AM in the morning on different days of the week. And I suspect that that time may not work for many of our new members as parents who are having to get their kids to school. I don't want to make that leap, but I will want to talk about kind of how, how we get these scheduled because that timeframe has worked really well for many. But I, I also recognize that that may not work well for everybody. And so, we'll, we will work on which, which of those committees, meetings could we still keep at eight? And which do we need to kind of switch to make it more workable for, for the committee members? Any questions on that one? Okay. And then the last item is, traditionally, and traditionally is, in the two years that I've been on the committee, I don't know what, what the, the schedule was before. But the, the last two winters, we've done a, a professional development retreat as a committee in the December, November, December timeframe. And because we have so many new members, I just, I, I feel like it would be really helpful for us to do that sooner rather than later and not wait until the fall. And so, I'm going to be having some conversations with Doug about the feasibility of us attempting to do something before the end of the school year, what that could look like. Would we get a facilitator? In the past, we've had Dorothy Presser from the MASCE come and facilitate. So, we, we just need to have some conversation about whether that's even possible and what that could look like. But I did want to get that on people's radar, that, that we may be trying to get us together for a few hours to, to get to know each other better and to just get started, get, get off on the right foot kind of sooner rather than later and not wait until the fall to get us all together. One last thing, I'm going to send an email tomorrow. I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to do it ahead of officially being the chairperson, but we do have some materials that Doug has shared with me from the MASCE, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Superintendents, regarding kind of roles and responsibilities as a new member. There, there is also charting the course class that the MASCE makes available and is running both in May and June. And so, I'll send a link to kind of how you could register for that if you wanted to. I highly recommend that, that everybody take the time to take that, that, that course. We will, we could potentially cover some of that material in the retreat, but in the meantime, I think it's, it's important, at the very least, to watch the, the open meeting law and the roles and responsibilities section of that, of that session. So, I'll share with you all tomorrow morning in an email the links to that, how you sign up for that, as well as the slides that we have. And the last thing that'll be in that email is a document that we all, we all, the previous committees have agreed to operate. It's called our, I think it's Standard Operating Procedures Document, that really just kind of outlines how we've all agreed to, to work. And so, that certainly could be a discussion again for the retreat if people had questions or concerns about anything that was on there. But it is a good, I think it is a good document to review to just understand like what are the, the, the general assumptions about how we're going, going to work as a committee. So, I'll stop talking and, and close with, I am available for conversations, to ask questions, to, to, for me to kind of provide any guidance that I can. I suspect that it's okay for me to offer Tom and, and Mike Boudreau as well to, to act as, you know, mentors and, and help and with answering any of the questions that you have about the process or how this works because I know it can be very overwhelming. And so, we're, we are here to kind of help you guys along where you need help. With that, unless anybody has any questions for me on anything that I just said, I'll pass it off to Doug. Does it look like we have any questions?
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to start off from the Wakefield Public Schools faculty and staff. Like to welcome Ms. Lehman, Ms. Wall, Mr. Piscadlo, and Mr. Ingles as, as new members of the school committee. And I think about Erin Kresos and her comments to start our meeting. I do think it's a, it's a, it's a great opportunity and working on the school committee is one of the, I, I think, so this is my own personal commentary here, just really a terrific way to do board service, to work in service of students, teachers, and, and our school system and really trying to help support the, the work that we're all doing to try to create the best opportunities and experiences for our, our students, right? And your children. So, welcome and, and thank you for being willing to take this on. So, it's greatly appreciated. And, and if we can support you in any way during your transition, please just let us know. Don't hesitate to reach out. So, would also like to take the opportunity to welcome back students and families. They're, they're back after a week of April break. I know it's always nice to have some time to, to regroup and, and connect. And so, we are, this week, we are entering week three of a full-time schedule with our elementary schools. We're entering our first full week of in-person with our middle school students. And so, today was actually day two. And to be honest, I think it took, it took a while for students to get into school, having everyone there at one time. We're also seeing a lot more carpooling, so there are more cars on campus. So, I think that there's a little bit of a backup at drop-off and pickup. But with the exception of those things, I, I honestly don't know if the first few days could have gone more smoothly. I think a, a great deal of thanks go to, goes to our teachers and our, our administration at the middle school for, for really working on schedules and, and getting kids in and out. So, so thank you for that. On this coming Monday, we, we welcome back our high school students into full schedules. And so, which is great. And at that point, you know, we will have all of our students back in school with the exception, with the exception of our students that are still working remotely. And so, but we feel like this is a great step for us. It's a milestone. It's been over a year in the making for us to get students back to school, and, and we feel like it's, it's part of what we need to do to really successfully close out the year. We talk about, you know, closing well to open well. So, that's, that's a quick update in terms of where we are. I would be remiss if I didn't share what our COVID did. I would be remiss if I didn't share uh, what our COVID data is looking like in the district. So currently we have, since our report last Friday, we have eight new cases since the twenty-third. Um, they all are at the high school level. We have thirty-seven students in quarantine. Um, you know, we 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 break out the data in quarantine and and really look at, you know, if the the quarantined students are directed by Board of Health, are they quarantining um, because of travel or a family decision? Do they have a sick family member? Or do they, are they experiencing COVID-like symptoms? And what's what's really good news is that, you know, with the breakout, we can see that, you know, several of our of our students of in the thirty-seven um, are are travel, excuse me, quarantining because they've traveled and they're following the guidance. Which I want to say to those families, thank you very much. We appreciate the the decision-making, um, the good decision-making and the support um, in following the travel advisory that's been put out by the state. So thank you for that. I don't know if anyone has any questions based on the information that I've shared so far. No? Um, just some quick updates from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We meet weekly with the Commissioner via Zoom. And so um, they've produced um, information, just an update on graduation. Um, they've updated it to include indoor venues. We here in Wakefield are going to have graduation outside. Um, and we think we're going to be able to get everybody on the field up at Landrigan. And there'll be more information forthcoming from Principal McLeod. We also heard from the Department of of Elementary and Secondary Ed, um, that they are changing their guidance around who needs to quarantine. So they're they're not changing the definition of a close contact, but they are changing um, their guidance around who needs to quarantine based on coming in contact with someone who is COVID positive. The the new guidance states that you do not need to quarantine if you are a close contact, but you would need to quarantine if you are a close contact and come within three feet. So it's a little confusing, um, but our nurses um, have met um, a few times to start the week. That we've reviewed the guidance, our administrators have the new information, and we feel, to be completely honest, like it's not going to change a lot of our protocols in terms of how we do contact tracing and how we advise on who will need to quarantine and who will not. And so we also will will do this work um, in collaboration with our local Board of Health. And so they've also updated, and I'm sure you've seen this, um, in terms of MCAS testing at the high school, we're going to be testing this week. Uh, but they've also changed the um, high school equivalency determination, um, the the testing that's required for MCAS. They've waived that for F Y or for the for the class of twenty-two as well. So that's an update there. Um, that's it in regard to kind of comments and updates. I'd like to take an opportunity to congratulate Tom Bankard. Um, as of yesterday, this is for the ninth time in the past ten years. I see, I see Mike Boudreaux clapping. I appreciate that, Mike. Uh, so for the ninth time in the past ten years, the Wakefield Public Schools have been honored um, with the Best Communities for Music Education designation um, from the NAMF Foundation, right? This is an outstanding award, um, and it's really kind of shows the the good work and excellence that's happening um, in in our music education. So to Tom Bankard and to his group, thank you so much for that. Um, so that's it for comments and updates.
Uh, Doug, before you move on to the the other agenda items, um, I had a couple of questions, but I'll I'll defer to anybody. Um, any of the other committee members have any questions about what Doug just gave updates on? No? Okay.
I I do.
Oh, there we go. Oh, Stephen.
Yeah, um, Doug, I'm sorry, but just to circle back on the close contact and close contact and three feet.
Yep.
Could you just, just, you know, simplify that a little bit?
Sure. And so um, so the Mass D P H and and so, so what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed is saying is they're not contradicting or changing um, the CDC definition of what constitutes a close contact. What they are changing is the guidance around who would need to quarantine and under what circumstances they would need to quarantine.
So I think I got, I got that part, right? So it's close contact doesn't have to, but close contact and within three feet.
Yes.
What?
Correct.
Within three feet seems to be a definition of close contact.
So um, so they're they're not disputing the the definition. The the definition that we've used is six feet of what const- right? So it's six feet within fifteen minutes and a twenty-four hour period. So there's time and distance, right? So they're not, they're not disputing or changing that guidance, right? What they're saying in regard to students that are in class and on on a bus, right? They're they're giving two locations. They're saying in class and while on a bus. If you are within three feet and you're masked and you come in contact with a student that is COVID positive, you would need to quarantine. And then you would be tested and treated like we we you would be supported and guided as we have guided students in quarantine in the past.
So so would it have been effective for them to just say, we're going to say the people that were in within three feet for fifteen minutes will quarantine? Is that the gist of it?
That's, that's the gist of it, but they're giving two specific locations, Stephen? So they're saying in classes and on buses, right?
Okay.
And so they're not saying uh, in other locations yet. So I'm assuming that they're going to update that and they'll, they'll include other locations as well. Because it it feels a little um, inconsistent to give guidance to say in classroom and on buses, but not on the playground, right? And say, or to say in other areas where you're still kind of masked, right? And so I I think that they're trying to thread a needle there while also trying to increase opportunities for students to stay in school, right? At at the end of the day, the determination will be made with um, the principal, the school nurse and the classroom teacher. And while we're in this space, we'll, we will obviously work in collaboration with our Board of Health as well.
Thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
Amy, Wall.
Thank you. Now, that's going to get confusing.
Yep.
Um, so Doug, you had touched on um, the graduation a little bit.
Yep.
And just also wondering, and excuse me if it's already been brought up, but obviously I'm new. Um, what about prom? I know with the restrictions getting listed starting Friday, I think dancing was one of the things that's going to be allowed, and singing. Um, so I'm just wondering if it's been, any talks about prom yet?
There, there's um, there's a lot of talk, Amy, about prom. And so the initial guidance from Desi, their advice was not to have, not to celebrate prom. Um, and so, or it was to celebrate it in such a modified way that it just didn't feel quite right. So so there's more information forthcoming on prom, um, but we think things are going to really start to open up in the coming weeks.
Okay. So maybe something that can be, or some type of creative idea that we can try to come up with or something along those lines.
We we, we already have the creative plans ready to go. We're just kind of getting, you know, we just want to be, uh, we don't want to be out of step with the the guidance from the state just yet. So we're, we're ready to go with um, what we think is a very nice plan.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
Doug, if I just add on to that, and senior night, we're not going to have a post-prom event, but we are going to have an event that week, sort of like a carnival-like activity at uh, Beasley. I mean, I'm going to say it's Thursday, but I'm not sure that week as well. So
Yeah.
Obviously, increasing the numbers makes it immeasurably easier for us to administer that, having two fifty as a breath of air. So uh, so that should be hopefully a good event. I think it goes from uh, four to eight o'clock uh, on Thursday of that week.
Yep. That's great. And and a corollary to this, what always comes up in conversation is, so what does this mean for end-of-year celebrations at the middle school and elementary school? So I I will tell you, I I spoke today with the um, middle school administrators and there's activities being planned for the end of year there. Um, and I know P T Os and principals are working on end-of-year activities for elementary as well. So more information will be forthcoming there.
I have a a follow-up question kind of on the same line. Um, and I I don't want to be a downer, but
Yep.
um, I I worry a bit about the idea of prom and senior night and graduation all happening in one week to to kind of go from nothing to a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a- and I I worry a little bit about that and 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 granted, now if the Board of Health comes out and says, have at it, okay, but um, we do still have families that have um, either kids that are 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 remote and or um, you know, at at risk um, uh, family members. And do we have a plan to to kind of um, support those families if we end up doing kind of lots of things and 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 a graduate, just the gradu- just the graduation, honestly. Graduation where everybody's on the field together, um, that I have to believe is going to make some people uncomfortable.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a- and the only guidance I've heard is two hundred and fifty people in in a gathering. Our our senior class is more than two hundred and fifty, or it's about two hundred and fifty people.
Yeah.
You add four guests.
It's almost exactly two fifty, easy as a reference.
Yeah.
Right, so you add four guests and you're now at twelve hundred and fifty people. Is that the, and and I apologize that I haven't read the Desi guidance, but is Desi's guidance up to two hundred and fifty students plus families?
It it's actually, there's, there's not a limit outdoors at this point for for commencement.
Okay.
Okay, as long as you can maintain social distance, right? And so there there are requirements in regard to safety, right? And so people need to be, you know, right now, will need to kind of practice social distancing, be masked. So all of those things are still in play right now. But in regard to the numbers, commencement, so the the guidance that came out today um, listed pretty stringent guidance around indoor commencement, but in terms of outdoor, um, it's it's considerably greater, right? And and we'll, we're going to put forth information, so this is in print, so that there's no miscommunication with this. But th- they had said that outdoor, you know, that it's not bound to the two fifty and it's six guests per student, right? With the caveat that you can maintain a social distance. So what needs to happen, we're going to have graduation at Landrigan. So what will happen is, you know, the administration will get up there and do a layout and they'll be able to see exactly how many people we can fit in. And and we will, as long as we can kind of manage it safely, we will kind of work toward that. Once that happens, we will obviously share that with the Board of Health um, to get their kind of feedback and we'll go from there. But I I hear you on the activities, right? There there are, this is not, um, these events are not pre-COVID events.
Yeah.
Right, where it's, you know, um, their safety and mitigation strategies need to be in place for these events to happen.
Yep. And it does sound like, you know, Mike, the event you were talking about with senior night, that's going to be outside, graduation's going to be outside. So you really are mitigating, you know, um, much of the of the risk there. I- is there any plan to do something um, different or offer um, families who are not comfortable with any kind of other option, or is that really not feasible?
No, I I, I think that the high school administrators are thinking about that.
Okay.
Re- but what really happens is you really need to understand what family needs are. Because what might be a a plan or that makes graduation accessible for one family might not work for another. So I I do know that the high school principals are are thinking about that and how best to make that happen.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I think there are some events like the senior parade, which all of them can obviously participate in, but your point's well taken. There's no replacement that I'm, well, there isn't for senior night. There's no way to do that unfortunately.
Right. But an outdoor carnival feels like a great alternative.
Yeah, and we're still maintaining six feet, even with the new guidelines. We already planned it that, you know, as best you can, we're going to make sure that the kids stay more than six feet away. Eating is very restricted uh, as well. So yeah, trying to do as much as you can.
That's great. Any other questions from committee members? Okay. Um, on to your next item.
Thank you. So the next item is is really a pleasure for me to to kind of kick off or to talk a little bit about. Um, and it is the um, the renaming of um, the Megan Burnett softball field. And so the 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 exact name is going to be Blatts Park and and the Megan Burnett Field. And so it's a, it's a pleasure for me um, to have been part and part of this work. And I say part of this because um, there were a lot of people um, along the way that helped this project come to fruition. Um, I I really want to start by um, thanking um, David Story and Bob Burnett. Um, and Amy, thank you for, I I didn't see you there on the screen, Amy Purcell, for a minute. Thank you so much for for coming back in. Um, and so, you know, there are m- many people, a- again, that that had a hand in kind of kicking this off. Three years ago, David Story and and Bob Burnett came to a school committee meeting and they presented what was their idea for a for a new softball field, okay? A softball field that was in, you know, some degree of disrepair, not consistent with Title IX. Vets field that they were playing on down by the, down down by Lake Quanapawat was was not quite the right size. You know, there were a lot of questions there. Um, transportation to and from the field were were kind of points of of difficulty. Um, and so they presented and and when they got done their presentation, you know, uh, Tom Markham, I think thanked them for their presentation and and thought kind of more more broadly and said, you know, maybe this is a a town warrant, or maybe this is a town meeting issue. Um, and I and I know that even before that meeting took place, um, I got a call one afternoon from Amy Purcell that said, you know, um, what's going on with the softball field? This is, this is crazy. It's not consistent with Title IX. We really need to do something here. And um, so I think through um, Amy's efforts behind the scene and her support and kind of channeling her energies along with Tom Markham, and I and I think the architects of this, um, David Story and Bob Burnett, um, really just putting their their energies um, into this work. Um, they marshaled the support of the entire girls' softball team. Um, there was overwhelming support at town meeting. Um, and there's just so many people that we need to thank. We need to thank uh, the Town Council, which are, which are our collaborators and partners in this work. We need to thank Dennis Fazio uh, from D P W for taking this project on like it's, it's really a a mission. It's very personal for him. Um, we need to thank Steve Mayo as well. And so um, I I'm, I'm going to kind of rest my comments there um, and really just thank everyone involved, especially Amy Purcell with this. I feel like I I don't know if this would have um, come together so quickly, Amy, if you weren't doing your work behind the scenes. Um, so with that, I'd like to turn it over to our our vice chair, maybe to make a a motion for a vote um, that the uh, we rename uh, the fields that uh, Blatts Park and and Megan Burnett Field.
Great, thank you, Doug. I motion that the school committee, in conjunction with action of the Town Council on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, vote to approve the naming and dedication of the new softball field as the Megan Burnett Field at Blatts Park, thereby recognizing the memory of both an outstanding Wakefield coach and player.
I wish Amy, Amy Purcell could do this, but I will second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Amy Lehman.
Hi, thank you. Um, I was actually in studio three years ago when when they first gave that presentation. Um, and I remember, I didn't know if it was Tom or Chris, was like, that's a great presentation, but you might want to take it to Town Council. Um, and then I saw them present at Town Council, so, and they never gave up and and I love that. And I'm glad this is one of the first votes that I get to have, so. And I didn't know Amy was behind the scenes, so that's even makes it a better story. So thank you.
Amy, I think I was here with you, sitting in the um, in in, I don't know why we were both here, but we were both here and and listened to that presentation and um, David and and Bob had done so much work. The plan that they shared was so detailed and um, and there there was just so much love behind it. Um, and it's, it really is uh, an an honor to be a part of kind of this. Um, and it's, it really is, uh, an, an honor to be a part of kind of this motion and, um. The Burnettes are neighbors of ours, but, um, I unfortunately never got a chance to, to know Megan, but, um, certainly have gotten to know Bob. Um, over the last couple of years and it's, um, I feel really lucky, um, to know their family and, and the work that they're doing. Um, do you want me to talk about the softball game?
Go for it, yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll chime in when you're done.
I somehow have gotten us into the idea of, uh, a Town Council versus. School Committee softball game that we're going to do, um, as a committee, uh, and raise some money for the Megan Burnett for, uh, foundation. So we're going to have to figure out how to get that scheduled and, um, and, um. Me playing softball is going to be a nightmare, but we'll, we'll all get out there and, and give it a, a good old try, so that's going to be a great idea.
Let's start the trash talking now, people.
Thank you, Michael, I'll pick it up from there, there you go. And, um, I think, I, I, I spoke with Steve Mayo today, who, who did share with me that he believes. That at his, at his, um, experienced tenure, that he could hit the ball out, right? So, um, so I think that, that that's going to be fun to, to see if that can happen. I also, we also, um, talked about consulting with our, our council and, and we checked policies. That have been written in the past and, and we do realize that Amy Purcell has been grandfathered in. A- as well as the, our past members who would like to participate, um, and, and to the new committee members, no pressure. No pressure, right, and so, but I think that this might be an annual event. Um, and so I think that this might be really wonderful tradition and a wonderful way for us to stay. Connected, um, to really this brilliant foundation, um, the Megan Burnett Foundation, um, that, that Bob has created. Um, and I think, I can't think of a, a better way, um, to just really, um, continue. Um, to, to just honor, um, th- their efforts and their work, and so I, I just want to thank everybody, so, that's it.
Any other comments from committee members? Uh, yep, Kevin?
Uh, just really quick, I think that's a great idea, I make no promises of my skill level, uh, I'm a very undistinguished academic. But, um, we did do similar challenges in the past with the Town Council, not only is it a great cause, but it's a great beta kind of hit your back.
Yeah, uh, Tom?
No, thank you, um, and I was, I was just going to, going to add, in, you know, in addition to what Doug was saying, it's nice really to see. This really come, uh, to, you know, to be in a, in a relatively short period of time. Um, it was, it was really wonderful, I, 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 I remember as, as Amy Lehman, uh, mentioned first. I remember that, the night that the, um, that really all the girls came from the softball team and the presentations were made. Um, and it was nothing but, you know, heart wrenching, impressive, um, and a really, really proud moment. Um, and, um, it's great to see, you know, this coming together. Um, it's great to see that, you know, the, the field in, in its, in the condition, um, that it is, getting ready for the, for the spring. And, um, and getting ready for apparently, um, hopefully not the, the School Committee and Town Council not to, to ruin the good field. But certainly we'll have some, I will have some fun and look very much forward to it, so it's really exciting, uh, to join, uh, the, the Town Council. And officially renaming, um, the field and the park. Nice.
Amy Purcell, I know it is not typical, um, but I believe that as the Chair, I can grant you the right to, uh, to speak if you wanted to. Not to put you on, on the spot, but I did want to offer that up if you wanted to say something.
Well, thank you, Suzie, um, yeah, I mean, I know that Bob is joining us this evening as well, so, um, you know. I'm, I'm very proud, uh, to be part of this project and, you know, I, I, I won't say much, but. You know, that phone call that I did make to Doug, um, you know, he just said yes, and it was that simple, so. He gave me a lot of credit, but, um, I'm just very grateful for you, Doug, for being open to the idea and. Uh, now you guys, uh, get to vote on this very, uh, special motion, so, uh, I'm glad to be here to watch it, thank you.
And I'll just say, um, when Amy sent her goodbye email to all of us, um. This piece of work was one of the highlights that she put in her email. Um, and, and I had honestly, I can't even believe I'm going to say this, I had kind of forgotten about it. Um, and so for you to say that, I was like, oh my goodness, absolutely, that is. A, a, an, a, 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 a very appropriate thing for you to be proud of, Amy, and the, and the, and the play, the role that you played in it. Um, because it is, uh, it did happen relatively fast, when, when you think about it, and the fact that the girls will be playing on it and, um. Uh, is, is just, it, it's just a great project, so, um, thank you. Is Bob, do we think Bob is on here?
I, I don't see him on the display.
I see a Bob on the display, I don't know who it is. Hey, Bob, how are you?
Working in the cheap seats.
I didn't, I didn't want to, um, I, it's nice to be able to see you, um, but I didn't know if you wanted to, if you had anything to say, I don't want to put at, uh. Put you on the spot either, but.
Well, Suzie, I was just looking out the window at the neighbors.
Yeah. Checking out our backyard.
Yeah, yeah, my dog's over there.
Yep, Zofie's over there.
Yeah, no, uh, thank you, I, I just, uh, I'm grateful, uh, to all the help that we got from, um, the School Committee and the, and Town Council, of course. But you guys are the ones who, who got us started, you got the ball rolling and, uh, you know, like Doug was saying, I know Amy was extremely helpful. I knew nothing about how to get things done and you guys basically, you know, led me through the process and, and it was great. So I'm, I'm just very, uh, very grateful to all the help that I got from every one of you. And glad we're here today.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah.
All right, uh, we need a roll call vote on that motion.
We do.
Uh, Judy.
Ms. Fair.
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux.
Yes.
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls.
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo.
Yes.
Ms. Wall.
Yes.
And I'm going to break the rule and let Amy vote too, Ms. Purcell.
Oh gosh, thank you, yes, absolutely.
There we go.
Thanks, Suzie, I appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, on to, uh, curriculum.
Oh, can I say, just say one more thing, just before I tune up? Uh, it's, this will be the only, uh, the only field in the, so the only high school softball field in the Middle Essex League. Uh, it's named for a woman. And it's, you know, it's a women's sport, so, so good for you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay.
Thank you, Bob, much appreciated, thank you for the time and, and we, we really appreciate it. And so, uh, moving on, um, we have a curriculum, um, review presentation and a recommendation, I'd like to turn it over to Cara Morrow, our Assistant Superintendent.
Absolutely, thank you, um, so first, before we get started, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes just to, um, highlight. I- introduce, uh, some of the people who are here tonight. Um, I'd first like to start with our two curriculum coordinators, we have, um, Lindsay Masca, who is our, um, five through twelve math curriculum coordinator. And Valerie Drynan, who is our elementary STEM curriculum coordinator. Um, I just wanted to, to stay with Lindsay and Val for a minute, just to really praise, um, the incredible leadership. That they've demonstrated throughout our math curriculum review process. Um, Lindsay and Val are both relatively new hires, they are both in year two with us at Wakefield Public Schools, but. Their impact has been huge already, and, um, I really just can't thank them enough. Um, they're both incredibly smart, innovative, and just come prepared and, uh, organized to everything that they do. Um, they started this planning process probably the summer before COVID. And created this beautiful plan and organized outline of how it was going to go, and then COVID hit. And we all grieved the change in process a little bit, but, um, they came back re-energized with. Just as effective and collaborative of a process, um, for the group to, to get engaged with. Um, so I really truly can't thank them enough for their leadership. And also tonight, we have two of our teacher leaders who are part of our math curriculum review team to help us with this presentation. Um, we have Erin Bailey from Galvin Middle School, and we have Christine Daly from Woodville Elementary School. Um, there's also, um, a number of phenomenal educators who were part of the overall math curriculum review team. That I know, um, Lindsay and Val are going to name, um, as part of the presentation tonight. So, um, for tonight, our purpose that, um, Val and Lindsay came, I believe it was in November. To just give a touch point on where they were in the process, and, um, tonight is really the concluding, um, part of our math curriculum review. Process where we explain to you, uh, progress update as well as recommendations that, um, are made by the team. So I'm really excited about this presentation, I thought it was just a phenomenal effort by just a really great group. That widely represents a lot of different aspects of our, our district, so, um, I think that you all get a lot of, out of it tonight as well. Um, so I will pass it over, um, Lindsay and Val, do you want me to pass it over to you to start?
Uh, yes, sure, that would be great.
Great, thanks.
So thanks, Cara, for that, um, very kind introduction, we appreciate it, um, and thank you all for having us back tonight. Um, and congrats to the new members as well, um, on the committee, we're really glad to be here to share our work with you all, um, and excited to provide an update. Um, do we have the slides, Cara?
I have them up here, oh, yep, there they go.
Okay, all right, um, so, um, if you could actually switch to the next slide. Thank you, um, so last time we saw you, um, we shared about our process at the point we were at, like Cara said, back in November. Um, and we went through, um, the development of our vision statement, um, and where we were at currently at the curriculum review at that time. And we know we have new members with us tonight, so we did include that information in the packet as well, um, for, for your reference. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about that as well. Um, and tonight, our goal is to update you on the progress of where we're at in the curriculum review right now, um, what our current recommendations are. Um, and next steps, so at this time, I'm actually going to pass it over to Christine Daly, our grade two, um, Woodville teacher rep. Uh, and she's going to do a little math, a warm-up problem with you.
Thanks, Val, um, thank you all for having us here tonight, my name is Christine Daly, I am a second grade teacher at the Woodville Elementary, um. Like Lindsay and Val, I am also in my second year here, um, in Wakefield, and I couldn't be happier to be here, um, and wouldn't pick any other district. Um, so tonight, there's a problem here in front of you, um, this is actually a warm-up problem that comes directly from illustrative math. Um, and a grade four problem at that, this is an example of one of the low floor, high ceiling tasks and routines. That students regularly engage with in this curriculum resource, um, any of the four shapes here on your screen. Can actually be identified as not belonging, um, therefore every student has the opportunity to participate confidently. Um, which is our goal here on Wakefield Public Schools, um, so everyone take a moment right now, check out the screen in front of you and. Humor us at the, uh, Wakefield Public Schools and type in the chat which shape you don't think belongs and why.
Oh, we can't do it.
I suppose other folks, I mean, anyone on the call could participate.
Isn't that convenient, isn't that convenient that you guys?
I was going to try, I wanted to put an answer in there.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Does anyone want to volunteer, um, and say maybe what shapes, you can either raise your hand, um, or just give me a wave. Um, Stephen, we'll start with you.
I'm going to go with A.
What are you, what's your thought behind that?
I think it's open.
Ooh, an open shape, Amy Wall.
Uh, B because it doesn't have a right angle.
Ooh, very observant.
A great use of vocabulary there, Amy.
Yeah, yeah, is that a math term?
Love it, um, does anyone else have an idea of maybe what shape might not belong and why? Keep in mind, there might not be a wrong answer. All right, we'll close it up, um, at this point.
Well, I was, I was going to say B.
Oh, okay.
Just as Amy said, I was going to say B.
Okay.
Sure, so, um, just like you, as students answer this problem, teachers are able to kind of steer the conversation. To more precise language and vocabulary that's needed, um, for the day's lesson at hand. In this problem, students might start off by saying, D actually might be the one because it doesn't, it has three sides, whereas the other one has four. Um, even though A, however, is not closed, it still has four, um, four sides. So the teacher could redefine or refine that statement for that student, say, well, it's only a triangle. Or other vocabulary like we started using that might introduce refined, including parallel, um, closed polygon, quadrilateral, parallelogram, trapezoid, right angle. Ninety-degree angle, um, obtuse acute, et cetera. So there are many opportunities here for discussion, which is what we are promoting, um, and also discussing, um, the, okay to make mistakes. But at the same time, everyone able to contribute to the conversation despite, um, their level of learning. So I'll pass that over to Val.
Thanks, Christine, um, so, uh, we just thought that would be a little fun start to our presentation tonight, um, thanks. Uh, for humoring us with that, um, so this next slide here is just, uh, we wanted to share, so we have Christine and Erin with us here tonight. Which we're really grateful that they came to present with us, um, we had a few other members come present with us back in November, and we just wanted to share. The list of our members, um, so everybody kind of could see who was on our team, we had a range of, um, all grades, K to twelve. We had, um, special education, uh, teacher from the elementary level and from the secondary level. We had teachers from every school in the district participate on the committee. Um, so we were really excited about our team and we're really grateful for all the work that they've put into this as well. Um, especially in such a challenging year, we really thought, as Cara said, we started out, we recruited this team before the pandemic. We're really excited about the process and then everything hit and we really, um, the team stuck with us and they, they still, uh, committed to the time. And we just can't thank them enough for that because, uh, Lindsay will share with you how many hours that was in a little bit. Um, so I'm going to hand that over to her right now to talk about our vision statement.
Great, thanks, Val, um, so I, of members of the committee that were here, um, back in November, you saw this vision statement, we discussed a little bit about how we came about it. So I really just want to highlight a little bit about, um, the purpose of this vision statement and, um, real briefly how we came about it. This was, um, a, a collection of work in response from our team to the question. What does Wakefield believe about the teaching and learning of mathematics? And, um, that question came after, um, a, a pretty extensive research and professional development session through the fall. Um, primarily based on, uh, Jill Bowler, uh,'s work in Mathematical Mindset, she's a professor, um, in Stanford. And, and you wrote this book, uh, that we read as a book study, um, but we also had other pieces of research in response to questions and other sources and things we were looking at. About, sort of, uh, current research-based best practices in mathematics and, you know, what are, what are students and human beings generally capable of, you know, the. Um, the, the big idea is that everyone can learn math to the highest levels, given the right environment, in the right context, the right materials. Um, and so, you know, that was really the, the primary research where we came about from this statement and, um, you know, just. I think the whole team is very proud of this statement because they all really feel like their voices are heard, um, in there. And, um, they feel like it's, it's a, it's a nice vision for what we really want to strive for in Wakefield for our students. Um, you know, I want to just point out that notably absent are the words speed, calculate, um, and algorithm. And so those are all things that are not here, and that's actually really important for how we move ahead, uh, in this work. The next slide. Um, so this right here is just an infographic that we made from Wakefield's full curriculum review process, which is one of the appendices in the report, um, that we put together. And so, um, I really congratulate you if you've been able to read through that, that whole report, there's a lot in there and it really captures just so much of the work and the data that we looked at. And so if you haven't got to it yet, um, you know, and, and you find a question along the way, please feel free to email any of us, um, you know, about that. Because, you know, it really was very comprehensive, um, you know, in terms of the, the work we've done over the, over the last year. But this is sort of just an infographic capturing Wakefield's established curriculum review process. Um, the part I want to highlight here is that where phase one, uh, five, one and two and three overlap a bit. That's really where our compression came from, when we went from starting a curriculum review, I kid you not, on March sixteenth, twenty-twenty was when it was supposed to start. And then it kind of all blew up on March twelfth, um, and then we're like, well, let's restart and replan, and so it kicked off in September. Um, but like Val said, we really had a super committed team, um, you know, and right now, we, um, are ending phase two and moving into phase three of implementation. Uh, which we're really excited about. The next slide, please. Um, so this is really a slide that, um, that I felt like we tried to capture just in, in numbers, just, you know, we couldn't resist as, as math geeks here. Um, of the work that has been accomplished, uh, since September, um, and so, you know, there were twelve formal math curriculum review team meetings. And that does not account, uh, the unofficial ones and the extra questions, the extra work that we did together. Um, the collective teacher hours, um, and this was adding up, the teachers and the number of hours that they put into this curriculum review was over five hundred hours of work in this last year. Which was, um, just an astonishing commitment, um, in one of the most challenging years of everybody's career. Um, you know, other highlights which I, I'm super proud of is that every member of the curriculum review team read about three hundred and fifty pages of research. Um, which was just a, a phenomenal accomplishment, for, for some of us, um, we've, we've read a lot of the research before. And for others, it was the first time we've read math education research, and so it was just a really exciting, um, way to include that, uh, professional learning in our process. Um, we did eighty-eight field test lessons, there's been, um, eight presentations to parents, colleagues, and, uh, a couple to the school committee, you guys made the tally. Um, but you know, it's just, it was a tremendous. But you know, it's just, it was a tremendous body of work and just a really comprehensive process that we went through this year. And so what I really wanted to do is just highlight here how this process followed us from the entire marketplace of curriculum materials that are available in the math education world down to a selection. And so it really does work as, as a funnel. It starts out with the entire marketplace of, of math curriculum review or math curriculum resources. And then all along the way, we were using research and professional learning with the team in order to filter and funnel. First Valerie and I made a pass at shortening the list by using standards alignment and ratings from both ed reports and CURATE. And CURATE is a Massachusetts Department of Education curriculum review system, which is just phenomenal. So we started by making a shortlist and then it was made shorter by practical factors like budget, time and technology needs. And then the team filtered that list at each grade band through our vision. And so they had an evaluation rubric, which is also in your report, you can kind of see what they were using to evaluate. And they were really comparing our value system from the vision statement against what they saw in these curriculum resources. We went through some field testing in the month of March into April. And then we had got to a selection. And so we kind of kept on narrowing that list of high-quality instructional materials. So then from there, we really got it narrowed down to a point where we need to say, okay, we need some consensus here, you know. And we really worked hard with our team to establish what consensus means. You know, it doesn't mean that everybody agrees, but it means the will of the group is heard and that nobody feels like there's winners or losers, but that we have a path forward towards our vision for math teaching and learning in the district. And so the, the process of consensus, we went through it twice. The first time was on February twenty-third. The whole team came together with administrators and special educators and a really broad team. And we looked at the curriculum evaluation data that the team gathered and decided, what do we want to field test? What do we want to see with our students? After that meeting, we knew that what was left on the table all would have worked, right? They were all strong horses that could really be, work for our students and could help us realize our vision. So then it came the refining part of seeing it in action and trying to figure out the potential of those resources to realize our vision through field testing. And so then after that, we did a consensus process again, kind of going from individual anonymous statements, feel like this is what I think, to smaller group discussions, to whole group discussions and consensus at the end. That was on April sixth. One thing I really wanted to highlight is actually was that this afternoon, we've been doing a lot of presenting on curriculum review today. Valerie and I presented to the Evaluation and Selection Network for the Massachusetts Department of Education. We've been engaged with them for this whole process. It's been a great professional learning opportunity that Wakefield's been involved in, both for, for ourselves and for some of the members of our team that have joined us. And we brought a lot of those ideas and that, those resources back to the process for Wakefield. But our consensus process, which we had to do virtually, which you know, difficult conversations can be and disagreements can be challenging virtually. But our consensus process was, you know, really visual. It was well-branded and there was, it was quite successful. People really felt heard and we came up in a pandemic with a curriculum selection for next year. And so the, the Department of Ed asked us to present that. And so we're sharing that with, with many, more than a dozen other districts in the state about how we did that and how we accomplished it. And so it really was a nice way to highlight the work that was being done in Wakefield. And they've actually told us that they're gonna need us to present that a few more times to some other groups, which was really exciting. We're pretty proud of that, so. Next slide. So then I guess our, our grand announcement is that our curriculum review team has selected illustrative mathematics for K-12. And so that product for illustrative mathematics is broken up into three grade bands. You know, one thing that I would encourage you to do because it's, it's open source curriculum that you can see it, is to go to the website and check it out. And you can see a lot of, I just spelled it wrong. Val, if you want to fix that, that'd be great. I can't type and talk at the same time. But it's illustrativemathematics.org. You can actually see a lot of the curriculum there from their website. Or IM.kendallhunt.com also has it posted there. The rollout plan for this is really going to be for grades K to six. It's gonna start in fall twenty twenty-one. And then grades seven and eight will follow the year after. Additionally, Algebra One courses will start next fall, which includes grade eight Algebra One and ninth graders that take Algebra One with the high school plan rolling up each year after that. And so that is their official recommendation from the committee. One thing that I, I think just stands out about illustrative mathematics is that it's a problem-based learning design that our team really felt like supported our vision and has most potential to accomplish that vision statement for our students. So Erin, I think this is you.
Yeah, sure is. Hi, I'm Erin Bailey and this is my eleventh year in Wakefield. So this is not my first dance with reviewing and adapting new curriculum resources. That being said, it is one of the first times that I feel like I've come away from that process invigorated and really excited to move forward. And I think that excitement really shines through in a lot of the teacher feedback that we got from field testing. So these are some comments that teachers made. Excellent tasks and discussions with the class. The warm-up was a great way to start a conversation and that was something that Christine modeled today as well. Best program option, clearly aligned to our vision statement. Great engagement for kids. Task with finding mistakes really made all the kids think critically and persevere through the problems. That's a mathematical standard as well. Student comment was, it was frustrating, but also definitely an example of productive struggle. Problems are visual, very focused on high levels of math and I like how the material is calibrated to a higher level of challenge and difficulty than other programs. Students were able to show multiple ways to solve and write equations to match the story problems. I like IM. I'm hoping that we will get some solid training on materials and routines before we have to implement. And for my students with language-based difficulties, disabilities, they were more actively involved than usual. Attention and focus were better. I actually think they were feeling more capable. The lesson really promotes analysis, self-monitoring, reflection and checking. And I'm just gonna add my own anecdotal moment from the other day, actually, which was after the field testing experience. But I was still, I'm still using the IM materials as I kind of get acquainted to it myself. And one of the students said, Ms. Bailey, we only get two problems today. And I said, I know. And then another student said, but I like totally get it. Which in people's feet for, this is good. So I really feel good about where we're headed with this process. And the next slide has some key recommendations. One of them that was highlighted by a teacher in their comments was the need for professional development for all educators in problem-based learning instruction, facilitating productive struggle and implementing the design principles of illustrative mathematics. This is a kind of a new way of teaching for some people. You know, it's a pretty traditional way to kind of say, this is how we do this. Now we're gonna practice together. Okay, now you can do it. And this is not that at all. This is really encouraging students to think through the process, problem solve, use their resources. And really that productive struggle is everything. And so I'm actually gonna skip the next one just to skip down to family and community support. And I think that's the part where we really want to be supporting families in this community to learn about the mathematical practice standards and how students engage with problem solving. That it's not about getting to an answer quickly. It's about really thinking about the whole process. And that, that may be an element of newness in some family support around mathematics. But also we're gonna need some school-wide goals to support the implementation of new instructional practices as well. And there are some more key recommendations that Val is going to go over as well.
Thanks Erin. So building off of what Erin said, supporting those school-wide goals with job-embraced professional learning. So we are starting to look at coaching and model classroom structures that we can use to help support this work. Looking at our current data structures that we have in place and reviewing those and refining those to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and, and gathering data to support our implementation. And then just also reviewing our current structures and how they ensure equitable experiences for our students in relation to progress monitoring and access for, for all students. Next slide, please. So implementation and monitoring following these key recommendations. So right now, we're in the process. Professional learning is starting this spring and summer. And we're in the process of building an implementation team for next year. So right now, we have a review team. We're gonna be building from that team an implementation team to monitor next year. Professional learning is planned for the school year next year as well. We're gonna be incorporating teacher and student feedback surveys, common assessments to track student progress. And then as Erin mentioned, the family engagement part, we're gonna be holding family information sessions throughout the school year just to keep everybody updated and informed about how everything is working and how to best support. Did I miss anything there Lindsay?
No, I think it was pretty good. And I, I would say that, you know, a lot of the things that we're, we're talking about really overview in these slides, you know, we have kind of detailed and described in, in the report. If, like I said, if you have questions, you know, down the road, even beyond tonight, just make sure you reach out to us for sure. So I mean, you know, great curriculum products don't come for free, but I will say that this particular product is, it's, is, from the committee's perspective and from mine, it's, it's both phenomenal and not quite as expensive as, as other ones, which is quite amazing. The, the structure of illustrative mathematics is that it's actually a nonprofit organization and the curriculum writing is funded by benefactors. And the cost of it really comes from professional learning and from buying print materials. And so it's a completely different business structure that is not the same as, as other major publishers. And so it's, it's just, it's an interesting system and it's gonna sound a lot different when we describe the cost of this program compared to what's been described in the past for what curriculum adoption means. So really to adopt this curriculum, what it means is that our teachers in year one need professional learning. And like we said, that's actually started, has started this spring. And we need consumable workbooks for students, you know, really focusing on that K to six rollout plus our Algebra One. And math manipulative kits are kind of like all of the tools and toys that students need to play with and engage and explore mathematics. And so in those, and that math manipulative kit cost, a lot of those materials are reusable. And so that's not something that you have to recur cost year over year as you look down the structure into year two and year three. Reading costs of those rows. We're trying to make a commitment to continue professional learning, both in-house and through illustrative mathematics and those facilitators. And so, you know, we are budgeting for some additional professional learning in year two. And then by the time we get to year three, you know, we can't evaluate where staff is at in that way. But you know, a lot of the professional learning and development with the math curriculum can be done in-house through our half-days and department meeting times and things like that as well, once we get into year three. And so the, the cost right now, based on our current enrollment and based on just the actual cost per student for these consumable workbooks is approximately fifty thousand dollars a year once implementation is done. And so that's roughly the, the cost there. In year one, we're also purchasing the teacher guides for everybody as well. So that's kind of upfront, that we don't have to rebuy each year. Excellent. Kara, did I miss anything in cost, I think? So no, I, no, I think you did a great job giving the overview. I, I think that we're, we're going to be flexible in terms of the professional development piece. You know, right now, we're anticipating year three is at a, a zero, meaning that we have our curriculum coordinators, our, you know, teacher leaders, model classrooms that will hopefully be able to, to provide the level of professional development that we need at that point in year three. I think that we all have a strong commitment to, you know, thinking about staying with this and checking in with teachers and making sure that, you know, things are followed through and that teachers have what they need to really implement in a successful way. We also have talked about the need to consistently onboard new, new staff as we hire new Wakefield Public Schools teachers, that they are onboarded with professional development to make them, to make sure that they have everything that they need to implement as well. So no, I think you did a really nice job covering all that Lindsay. Thank you. If, if it's okay, I did want to touch on one other point and just highlight the, just the collaborative nature of, of this process and especially the efforts that the team made to include administrators, which I think is so, so important in this work. I think our administrative team is really committed to supporting this work and supporting the implementation and was very, you know, trusting of the group and the process and, and how it was all laid out. And you know, when, when we talked about school-wide goals, that, that's work that is to come this summer as we work with our, our principals at every level. We start talking about school improvement plans. I think Doug and I are, are committed to working with principals to make sure that each of our schools has a school improvement plan that's dedicated to our, our math, our math curriculum review implementation in, in next year, which is just, it's really important. It's really important to continue to educate. Administrators can't be everything to everyone. They can't know every content area inside and out. But I think it's really important to continue to work with our principals and keep them part of this process. So they can really have rich conversations with teachers about math education in the classroom. So I'm excited about that as well. Anything else we missed Doug, in terms of the?
No, I, I want to thank Lindsay and Val and, and our teachers for being here this evening and for everyone that's been involved in this project. You know, I, I think that this is, this is really kind of set a, a new standard for this, this type of work. So I think the curriculum areas to come after this Lindsay are gonna have some work to do.
Well, she's, she's already presented to the other curriculum coordinators about the process.
So I see that the smiles and I, I think, I like that you've kind of reset that standard. So, so good for you guys. I think you, again, I feel like this is just such an amazing product and such an amazing demonstration of collaborative work, right?
Absolutely.
I, I really think it's a, really just an amazing document. So thank you.
We, we did also, Val and Lindsay, I did want to, I think you're all set, but we do want to open up to questions from the committee. Are you ready for that part? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I think, I remember last November, Lindsay and Val, when you guys came and you were talking about what you'd done, what you were planning to do. And of course, we're neck deep in COVID at that time. I said, how are these people ever gonna pull this thing off? I said, this will never, ever happen. And, and I would have bet my left arm it was never gonna come to fruition. I'm sure you probably felt that way sometimes too. But having grown up in a culture where math was memorization and repetition and that was it, you just grinded your way through it. And how that's changed, even with my kids, I could barely help them with their homework. And now you're taking it to a whole different level of how to prepare them better for problem solving. My kudos to you. Incredible accomplishment, particularly in these times. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mike. Amy. Wall.
Hi. So I love to see all your excitement and that makes me feel really good because it looks like this is something that you guys are all really on board with. I have a couple of questions. How, in, when you look at the curriculums, how many different curriculums are there to look at for you guys to choose from?
It's a great question.
I think it was like about twenty-five-ish in the beginning Lindsay, before you and I narrowed down with the standards, right? And we, we narrowed down Amy to five at each grade span, once we like funneled it through the, that, that chart that Lindsay showed or on an earlier slide where it was like the standards and then budget and like time of our math classes and all those district parameters that we had. And then our team, so our team members deeply reviewed five different resources at each level. But the whole, the whole array, I think Lindsay, was around twenty, twenty, twenty-five?
Yeah, it was, I mean, we really ignored anything that was published before twenty fifteen and hadn't been revised since, right? Because you know, we kind of talked a little bit last time about when Massachusetts adopted Common Core state standards and sort of how that process of curriculum writing happens. And so like when Wakefield went through their last curriculum review cycle and had adopted a vision for the last six years. In vision, when that was being written, they had to pivot halfway through curriculum writing when Common Core was adopted and kind of made changes. So they were sort of backing into the standards rather than running from it. And so the marketplace and what the materials look like that's available now compared to what it was six years ago is dramatically different. And you can really see in both ed reports and from the CURATE reports and DESI, a really big split in products that were written from the standards or backed into them. And so it was, there's a lot out in the market, but you could whittle it pretty quickly based on standards alignment and evidence of math practice standards, so.
And then, so when you have this new program, I assume that there's, not only for the kids, but for the teachers, there's a learning curve. And how comfortable do you guys feel and I guess with the other teachers that you have, the resources you need? I know with professional development days, that's time to do those. Do you feel confident that, that everybody can get up to speed when they need to?
Yes, definitely. We've been meeting with Kara and Doug throughout the process and, you know, getting the support we needed to continue moving with the planning time. We had a question, some related to something like what you just said Amy of like, can we do this? We would meet with them, check in, make sure we can move forward. And that was kind of, that was part of our parameters in narrowing down the curriculum. And then I think also from our team, the, the big piece was the vision statement that we created. Because we know it's a very forward-thinking vision statement and that it's gonna take some time to get there. But the team felt that being able to have that to fall back on anytime something came up into question, we had a, we had like a backbone to the process and a backbone to what we were hoping for our students in the future to come back to and be able to say, okay, this is why we're picking this. This is what we're gonna do to support this. And that's where- And that's where some of those recommendations came about with, we've really built some teacher leadership structures throughout this process that were, like we said, we're going to build that implementation team to continue on. So that team will be meeting regularly throughout the year next year for any bumps in the road that come up, right? That you just said that, that we can work together and figure out how to best support through the coaching, through the professional learning. As Kara said, all the principals have been really great and really supportive in this process as well. So they have been involved at certain key points in the process and are committed to supporting that, that professional learning next year as well.
And then one more question. So with the, the advanced math, the seventh to eighth grade math that we have now, I think one of the chats had said Algebra One for ninth grade was going to be implemented in the 2021, 2022 school year. So the kids that are going into eighth grade this coming up school year, will they have the advantage of doing that Algebra One course then?
Yep.
And kind of follow along with the curriculum that they're on with the advanced math?
Yeah, the, the Algebra One rollout for next year is going to be any student doing Algebra One, including the grade eight Algebra. So grade eight Algebra and ninth grade Algebra One will be using the Illustrious Math materials.
Okay. Thank you all very much. It was really informative. Thank you.
Other committee member questions? Tom?
Thanks. I certainly want to add a great thank you, you know, Lindsay, Val, Erin, Christine, one for being here tonight, but really for, for all the work that has been done in this, you know, very difficult year. You know, putting together a curriculum, you know, task force like, like, like you folks have in any normal year or any normal couple of years is extraordinary work. And you add all of the complications that have gone on in the last 12-plus months and it's really well above and beyond. So I certainly want to, I know, you know, thank you for all of that, that what you've, you have kept us informed along the way, which has been, you know, a big, a big help. I think some of the community members have been, have expressed interest as well along the way. And it just really shows really some, some really quality work in your presentation tonight. A couple of things from your presentation that sort of struck me. One is the student quote, productive struggle. I love that. I mean, that's pretty cool. I bet that whoever, whoever had that student must have, you know, sort of like, like a light bulb went off, right? And that was like, how cool is that? So that's, that's a great, that's a great quote. As soon as, as soon as you said that and I saw it up on the slide, I was like, there we go. This, this is, this is making its mark already, right? Just in the field test. There were two things I'd like to ask if you could talk about. One is the training or the professional development. What would that sort of look like in year one, which is where the lion's share of the money for PD is being spent, year one? But there is also some money that I see in year two for professional development totaling $72,800. So if you could expand a little bit on what the professional development expectations for the, for the staff are? That's question one. And question two for me is, one of your slides spoke about some goals regarding family and community support. You can speak a little bit deeper on what that means and what we might be expecting of, of families and I suppose of the community too, but as importantly, what should, you know, what should parents expect?
Great. I'll take the, the family and community part first, I guess.
Thanks.
So, I mean, for sure, one of the things that we want to be clear about is that, is that we're, there's not necessarily expectations that families have work to do for their students, right? It's really more about making sure that families understand the goals and the mission of the math teachers and what's going on, you know? In our last Parent University session that we held, it was an update on the math curriculum review process. You know, and Lindsay and Val really talked with parents who attended about, you know, this idea that, you know, what really is productive struggle and how do you support your students in that? And often, in the same way that teachers have to learn and paraprofessionals have to learn and anyone who sort of interacts with a student who's learning math in this rich way has to learn that the satisfaction of getting an answer quick doesn't last as long as the satisfaction of figuring it out yourself. Because that's really where that conceptual understanding and that long-term learning comes from. And so it's really about helping families understand the design principles of the curriculum so that way, you know, if their student says, "Well, my teacher doesn't answer my questions", they have a little bit of context to understand that, well, they do and they're still encouraging you and helping you, you know, get to that answer. And so like there's, it's some, some language to help families understand and also sort of ways to help your student without giving them an answer. You know, like how do you, how are there simple questions when your kid is working on their homework assignment that maybe you can remind them, "Do you know where your resources are? You know, how would your teacher explain this? Could you explain it to me?" And kind of strategies like that, that don't involve a parent needing to come up with an answer for their students. That's really kind of the knowledge that we want to help parents get. So, you know, we really envisioned next year having more of these family information sessions at different grade bands, similar to what we did at Parent University this spring. I think it'd be really helpful for parents. Other opportunities for family and community engagement. This particular curriculum resource has phenomenal family letters at the beginning of every unit that teachers can make PDF and email their families. At the beginning of every unit has the learning goals, tips at home, things to expect their kids to talk about, what could you ask them at dinner for every single unit. Additionally, me and Val are going to be working to support teachers to have common language information in slides for things like back-to-school nights and parent conferences so that way everybody feels supported and has a consistent message about what our goals are with this curriculum.
And Lindsay, I think, sorry, Tom, no, I was just going to just add a reference point. I believe you recorded the Parent University session and that's up on the website. Just if, if people wanted more information, I thought that was a great presentation. So if anyone wants to do a little more research, it's on the Parent University tab of our website with, as a recorded session.
Great. If I could follow up, Lindsay, before you talk about professional development. I remember being probably not as frustrated a parent, but being with a lot of frustrated parents when we did the, the change to Everyday Math. And I remember as an elementary parent at the time, you know, there was lots of, there was lots of, you know, it was, you know, the presentations were well-done, we had parent meetings. My kids were at the Greenwood School, so we had lots of parent meetings about it and we walked, you know, teachers walked us through as best, as best they can. A lot of parents left sort of scratching their heads. Could I ask, you know, maybe, maybe a step deeper for parents? What might be some of the major sort of overarching differences that parents may expect, especially parents that are, that have kids that have already been experiencing the curriculum through now? And then what can, what can, what can they expect to be different, both from what the kids bring home as well as what they may be, you know, expected to support or be aware of, as you were saying?
Sure. So I think the, the sort of concise answer to that is that what parents are going to see is that there's not really ever one right way to do something. Is that there are always multiple strategies. There are lots and lots of really interesting ways that students come up with to think about a problem or have learned to think about a problem that involve various visuals, various models, different ways of lining things up. It might look like more work and harder, but it's actually really a phenomenal showing of conceptual understanding of complicated mathematics and different strategies kids use. And so what parents are going to see is what looks like the long way in what, from a teacher view, is the really deep conceptual understanding way. And so oftentimes, I think actually Valerie, in our, in our first Parent University session in the fall, one of the things we showed families is what does it look like to use different models for multiplication? And we took them through putting dots as an array in first grade and being able to count them up in rows and columns, all the way through swapping out different things. And you get to strategies that are pretty complicated algebra with polynomials. And it's all the same strategy that kids start as early as first grade and you keep building that and making it more abstract and more complicated. And so I think the biggest difference is that there's not an I-do-you-do model. That's not the design of the curriculum. So it's not teachers show you exactly what to do and then you copy it, right? That's not the strategy or the model. And also they'll see different strategies that they maybe haven't seen before. And the number one thing I can give to parents as a real quick piece of advice is, instead of showing your student the fastest way that you know how to do it, ask them, "What does this mean? How do you do it?"
Thank you.
Val, did you want to jump in on the PD question?
Yeah, I can jump in on the PD part here. So, so the, the spring PD that we're going to be engaging in is the, is from Illustrious Mathematics. It's called the Teach and Learn. So it provides teachers with background on the program design, on the routines and structures that are in place, how a lesson looks from start to finish, and preparing them for teaching the first unit. So that's four modules for the grade levels and we have a separate secondary and a separate elementary session for that. And then in addition to that, there's two more module planning sessions that happen throughout the school year that are half-day sessions with the Illustrious Mathematics trainers again. And like Lindsay said earlier, with the Illustrious Math, the business model is like, we're, the materials we buy are from a publisher, but the PD is from the curriculum writers. So the PD that we're receiving is from Illustrious Math, not from Kendall Hunt, where the books would come from. And, and so this is focused on planning for particular areas, like planning for differentiation for different student needs is one of the other two sessions, right? Lindsay is one of the follow-up sessions and then I'm trying to...
I wish I wrote down what they were because I can't remember, but...
I have the flyer. I'm like... So there's two sessions that focus on specific pieces of a module, but they're both similar to like that first module planning where it's preparing teachers to teach the next unit that's coming up with a specific focus area each time. So it's kind of spoon-feeding these little bits and pieces of different needs that may arise along the way. And then for year two, to answer your question about that, there are other modules. And as Lindsay said, we have to, with using our implementation team and gathering data throughout our implementation next year, we have, we can decide which modules are most needed for year two. So there's different, like there's a menu of different module options, again, designed the same way, half-day professional development models that we can purchase depending on what our needs are. As Kara said, we need to implement and figure out what, what areas the teachers need support as we're implementing. And in addition to that, this summer, as Kara mentioned, the administrator piece, we also have administrator PD planned as well for them to be able to get familiar with the overview of the program and to provide them support in how to best, what they're to be looking for when they go into a teacher's classroom that is teaching this, using this program resource.
I will add, Val, that a big part of what Valerie and I know that we'll be committing our time to next year is being in classrooms, to be supporting teachers, doing model lessons when they need that, making sure teachers know which colleagues to go see, you know, when they need to see a lesson done and really trying to be in the classroom for that job embedded professional learning all along the way. And so me and Val are going to get better at saying no to other things so we can really focus on being in classrooms and making sure that we're doing that support. Really heavy-hitting that in year one, for sure.
And I think that's a key component, what Lindsay just said there. So like, one of the things we heard loud and clear from our curriculum team throughout the process was, it's great if we have them come do PD with us, but we also need something internal to follow up with that. So what Lindsay and I have thought about as we were looking at the different PD options that could be purchased was how do we give enough from the publishers that it gives the background? So this year is those two full days and then the two half-day sessions. And then in between that, we have other PD time through the PLC structures, through the, the meeting structures that are already in place in the district for us and some of the teacher leaders to help support that ongoing work that needs to happen throughout the year and then to be in classrooms as well, as Lindsay just said. So it's really looked like a whole picture of professional development, not just those few, by those two full day, two half-day sessions that we're purchasing from the, from the program.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you again, and the entire team. The quality of your work certainly shows. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions from committee members? Oh, yeah. See, I can't even see those hands. Steve, Ben?
I, maybe Ms. Leen can go before me. I think she had her hand up prior to mine. So I'll let her go first.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and entertaining questions. Tom touched on training, so that was one of my questions. And I actually had a parent reached out who's very concerned about the, the training, I guess, Illustrious Math as part, the concepts, maybe how to train. I don't, I just want to bring that up because I told her I would. I was looking at the teachers and I saw, so I'm going to speak to the elementary because those are the students that I have now, it's the ones I'm most familiar with. There was one MSN teacher, grade three, and I just was, if you could share any of the special education feedback you got, because this is some like deeper, open-ended, higher, I think Pearson calls it like higher-level learning questions. Those are the ones we've always skipped. If you got any feedback about that for those students and, yeah. And then the other question I had was class, and that might be the easiest one. Is that 55,000 per student or total district? I wasn't sure.
Oh, no, whole, it's total.
Okay. All right.
Lindsay, may I jump in about the first question?
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you. So a lot of these tasks are really great about providing what we're calling a low floor and a high ceiling, which basically means that there's an entry point for every student, which is really incredible. And the problem that Christine opened us with today really modeled that, I think, that because there's not just one answer, there are ways to justify a lot of different things, then a lot of students can notice different things and still be correct and find success and build their confidence. But on the, on the flip side of things, that high ceiling is there too. For students who really need to be challenged, who need more and who are capable of doing more, that they can still use higher-level vocabulary and look for more complex connections between things. And so the tasks are really built such that everyone can truly be engaged at some level. And so though I agree like the Pearson, high-level, whatever those are called, yeah, we skip those too, because they're not for everybody necessarily and, or they don't provide the structure that allows for that. And I do think that Illustrious Mathematics has done a really excellent job of finding problems where there's an entry point for everybody. And, you know, in addition, we've talked a lot about strategies of like, what do you notice and what do you wonder? And how really like what you notice and what you wonder can be anything. And the more creative it is, sometimes that leads to even better conversations. And that's what we're looking for anyway.
Yeah, I would, I would add that like some, like one of our, our grade eight teachers with her grade eight algebra class had to stop a conversation with the class because it was going on for almost the whole block. She goes, "I love how long you guys can engage in this. Keep going and going and going." And that same problem in a grade eight math class with students who struggle, teachers and the special educators in that room really said, "I saw more engagement. The kids constructed their own learning. They understood it conceptually in a way that they never had before and I didn't feel like I needed to tell them step-by-step what to do. They really came up with it themselves." And that's really the beauty of this design and it's very well-batched by the research that says that these low-floor, high-ceiling tasks really build a positive identity and agency for students in mathematics and give kids a more equitable experience. And just one individual problem differentiates for a really wide range of needs for kids. And we saw that consistently, a few different special educators provide that feedback on that they were seeing better engagement and better understanding from their students than they had with other materials.
And I just want to tag on because I know that Erin and Lindsay just talked from the secondary perspective, but the same feedback was shared from the elementary perspective on the team, not just from the special education teacher on the team. She was, she said the same thing. Erin, Erin used like, took the words right out of the low floor, high ceiling. So thank you for sharing that from the teacher perspective because you worded that wonderfully. And that's exactly the feedback we were getting at the elementary was that our students that maybe were more reluctant to participate before or tended to not be able to access some of those problems that you, Val, rooted to of like the eliminating the high, you know, the higher-order thinking problems that they had in there. More of those students that were more reluctant in the past were engaged in this work in the field testing phase. And so we heard the same feedback from the elementary, both from the classroom teachers who were field testing and from the special education teachers on the team as well.
Val, just separating groups, I'm sorry. Like still being groups, groups discussion for math at the elementary level?
Like in like small groups?
Maybe they're not doing that now because of COVID.
No, that's actually, that was still happening. That was one of the most, that was actually one of the pieces of feedback from Illustrious Math. Our teachers on the team were very worried about how we were going to field test this in an environment where social distancing had to happen. And I went and visited classrooms that were, were field testing this and kids were still having amazing conversations even from six feet apart in their like, you know, triangle groups. The teachers are very creative in how they're... The teachers are very creative in how they're letting kids talk to each other from six feet apart, and they were able to engage in this work. So they were working in small groups, in partners, and a whole class discussion. Christine, did you want to add on to that? Because I know you were actually doing some of the field testing at the elementary.
Yeah, I, as the elementary level, I did want to just, just quickly talk about the engagement and the discussions. And of course, just like on the screen here, we have a wide range of abilities despite what your, what your career is. And so for us in the classrooms, seeing across the board how the students that are maybe not necessarily at that high, the high ceiling level, they're able to contribute to that discussion, and they're able to, you know, hear other things that maybe they didn't think of, or maybe they didn't think of it right away at their level, but maybe they saw it because another student brought it up, but they wouldn't have thought about it in, in general. And so it kind of circulates that discussion. And I kind of want to talk about what Lindsay was saying, and discussions in our classroom at all ranges and all levels were just so engaging, and it was really hard to kind of cut them off and say, okay, we really need to move on. But I love that aspect of it. It was definitely my number one pick as well. But I also love that it wasn't a series of repetitive problems for these children to be doing, because we know if you can do, you know, four or five problems, we understand that you get the concept, but the concept that can range with all different abilities and then that engaging discussion, which this program promotes and what we want them to also have, it gives them the skills and that vocabulary, and they get to use it and understand it by seeing it and experiencing it themselves. And that goes for all my, at, at Woodville School, I can say from K to four, knowing a lot of the teachers at all the grade levels, they just 100% thought the engagement was extremely high compared to what we're using right now in Pearson.
Thank you.
And did we miss part of your question, Amy? Was that, did that-
No, the other one was the cost, and I had training, but Tom had asked that. I did, one other thing, when, I think it was Lindsay mentioned strategies, like right now I know the teachers that they've been telling my daughter, like, we'll teach these strategies, then just pick one that works the best for you. Does that have this option as well, this illustrative math?
So there are strategies and, and, but it's designed differently than some of the other programs with the strategies that, that you're referencing. The way that the IM is designed for elementary is there's like two to three activities throughout the lesson. So everybody launches with a question like, what you guys saw in the beginning tonight? And then it leads into activity one, which is a more structured, more scaffolded activity. So there might be more visuals, or they're doing something more with manipulative in activity one. And then the teacher brings everybody back to have a full group discussion about that. And then activity two builds on that and maybe takes away some of those supports. So now they've already done this with like the hands-on piece, and now they're going to draw it, for example. And so each activity builds on the other and takes away a little bit of scaffolding and then comes back to a full group discussion at the end. And then to the, your point about the small grouping, the elementary, you may be referencing like center work time, and there, the way IM is designed at the elementary, or actually even K to five, they actually have a center-based structure. It's built into the lesson time for K and one, and it is used as support in K to, sorry, in two to five, there are center activities that can provide kids with additional support if they need it, or additional challenge if they need it. So there's the particular centers that they teach for a section or a unit that will be reused for kids to be able to have more practice or more challenge, depending on what is needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephen?
Thank you. Yeah, so first I want to say the, the presentation was great, and the idea that you had sort of people come ask if you could share it with your colleagues sort of says volumes. So congratulations, it's wonderful. I'm particularly attracted to the, the growth mindset aspect. I know that that's something that I've seen championed in the district since our day one, and it's something that we've, we've appreciated and sort of implemented in our house. So I like how it sort of caters to that. That being said, this kind of sounds like, a little bit like math is subjective in, in the approaches, which is, I'm, I'm looking at it from not, not just our house, but other households and parents. I, I'm preparing for the echoes of that, like the new math argument, like why do we have to do things different? Because I heard that a bunch. And, and so where parents are going to be, you know, children are going to come home from school with like, I can do this like so many different ways, and no, it doesn't always have to be just A, it can be A, B, and C. So I'm wondering, can we talk a little bit more about sort of how are we going to talk to parents and caregivers about sort of how they can see this math, how they can feel comfortable with it? Because I'm a big believer in that parent partnership. And I know that as a parent, if you're getting frustrated sort of with what your, your kids are coming home with, you, it can be hard to sort of make that environment inviting in your house that, that your kid still is excited. It's not just at school, they come home and they're still excited to learn. You know, if as a parent you're frustrated with that, that environment might not happen as easily. So, so yeah, what are, what are the plans to sort of engage parents and make them sort of well-equipped partners in, in this endeavor as we go to new math? And, and I'll just say as an aside, any idea to pilot it to some parents, like to some households first, the same way you might do a classroom?
So, I mean, for, for the, you know, why, why is this a good direction to go? Like a really short answer to that, you know, for, there's lots of long answers. I mean, we have taken up a lot of your time, and I apologize, everybody, but we could go on forever. But I, you know, the, the shorter answer to that really is that if you look at skills that kids need for, for college and career when they leave their, their public school education experience, they actually don't, you know, calculation, algorithm, and one linear way of thinking about things are not skills that employers are looking for right now. And, you know, we have some research about that that we've looked at with various different groups and whatnot, but really it's, it's problem solving, it's teamwork, it's creativity, it's innovation, and it's, and it's deep thinking to solve problems. And so, and I think the biggest shift in how many of us grew up in school compared to now is, is technology and the ability to have calculators. And so, you know, if, if I can use technology to do some big calculations that then mean something and I can interpret it and use it, that's really the skills that we want our kids to come away with. And fluency and facts and numbers are all really important things, and, and there are a lot of problems where there's a correct answer, but there's more than one way to get there, and more than one way to be creative about, about thinking about that might enlighten us to hear some new things or, or learn some new things about that situation. In terms of helping parents and families feel comfortable with that, I do think that the, the, the family communications for each unit from this curriculum product do a phenomenal job identifying what strategies are going to be used, what can you ask your child, how can you be a partner in this work at the beginning of every unit? In fact, if you go to the Kendall Hunt website, you can see every single letter that goes with the units. I think six through Algebra II is up right now, and I don't know that the family letters are up yet for K to five. That might not be until-
Yeah, I got the answer from Meg earlier today, actually, that they're currently being loaded, so there are some there, but the materials are building over the next couple weeks, so that'll also be loaded within the next couple of weeks.
So there are some samples there, but if you go to im.kendallhunt.com, you can actually see all of these resources and, and pull up some of those family letters and start to get a flavor of, of what that looks like for, for that resource. But certainly, that's, you know, to your point, Stephen, that's going to be a big part of what we want to help families understand. When we do these, these sessions, these forums, we want to pose some questions and talk through the math and kind of help families experience that while also helping them understand what's going on in their child's classroom.
And I think to echo what Lindsay said there, I, one of the things that, that we, we talked a lot about this in, after we read the book and book study, some of our elementary teachers engaged in some of this work with the book study in PD as well. And what it, what the piece is here is it's not saying that the answer is never important or the answer's not important, it's the, it's also valuing the process of how we got there. So I think in the past, it was really emphasis on the answer only, and this is really emphasizing the combination of the two, emphasizing on how we get there and how important that process and the thinking is behind it. And then as far as the, the parent piece, in addition to the letters and the presentations, I know I've, I've been, I've ruled out new curriculum in previous districts that I've worked in as well, and I think especially at the elementary level, speaking to the elementary, one of the most important pieces has been involving the teachers and the students in some of the parent work that's done and like, really like getting to show the math as well. So I wouldn't picture those parent evenings always being presentations like this where we're just talking at parents and saying, here's a list of questions you can ask your kid. I would picture them being more involved with kids and teachers working together to help share some of that with the parents as well. So that's part of what we'll be talking about in implementation planning as we start building our implementation team. We have our final meeting with our current team next week where we'll start talking about recommendations for how we move forward with that work. But I think, like you said, it's an ongoing process. It's not something that will be able to be fixed or like taught in one session. It's ongoing work that we'll have to do over the next few years together, so.
Mike?
Yeah, I've, I've been just sort of listening and absorbing this great, great question from the new committee members as well as those that have been around a little bit. But what I really keep appreciating as I watch the four of you is when you're answering questions, your faces just light up. You're, you're so enthusiastic about this, and you know, that will be infectious with the other teachers and your students as well. And I think you, you can tell you care compassionately about this, you know, forgetting about the mountains of work that you've done. I just, I really appreciate how enthusiastic you all are about this. So thank you.
Lindsay, you should have brought your fairytale graphic tonight. We needed that one.
That's a good one.
So, so Mike, I want to add to that. As I, as I was leaving tonight to go to the meeting, I was walking, walking out the door and talking about what some of the topics were, telling my husband and my son happened to be sitting there. And when I said something about math curriculum, he said, "Oh, you know, Mrs. Buker mentioned the, the math, the, the new math, and she's super excited about it." And then I saw her name kind of on the list as, as part of the committee. But Mike, what you just said is so interesting, right? Because I mentioned it to, to Trevor. Trevor remembered hearing his teacher talk about it, who was excited about it, and now Trevor's kind of like, huh, I'm kind of interested in what this, this whole math curriculum change is going to look like. And that enthusiasm does kind of breed and spread. And, and so I, I think it really is a testament to the, the work that you guys have done and the, and the involvement and the commitment, that it feels like you've got teacher leaders kind of behind this change, which will make a huge difference, not just for teachers but for kids. So I, I did want to add on to that. Any, any other questions from committee, committee members? Kevin?
Just real quick, because I know we've been here a while, but I'll echo what some of the other colleagues have said. This was a great presentation. It's really my first exposure in depth. It did come up from some parents, so I know that there's some excitement, some questions, of course, and, and those sorts of things. I'm really glad that that's part of the process to come up. Just really quickly, I noticed if I read it right, it looks like Phase Four is kind of assessing, and I'm sure there's ongoing assessment, but I'm kind of curious, and what, what does success going to look like in terms of student, student achievement? How we know we're reaching the goals and the outcomes that we're hoping for by implementing?
It's a, it's a great question. You know, I, I think that we've kind of outlined a, a couple of markers that we're really looking for, for successful implementation. One of them is, of course, is, is success in, in the classroom, that, that teachers feel proficient in the routines, that kids are engaging, that we feel really comfortable with the materials and how to use them. How do we successfully facilitate problem-based learning? And that evidence is really going to come from Valerie and I being in classrooms, from our model classrooms, from our administrators being in classrooms. That's really where that evidence will come from. A second thing that we're really going to be looking for is an increase in our students who are meeting and exceeding expectations on our standardized assessments in, in the district, you know, so really across the board. So, you know, Wakefield traditionally, or not even traditionally, just in the past and historically, has been pretty on par with state average for those categories, whether it was called advanced and proficient, or it meets and exceeds, has really been kind of on par with the state. And so what we're really looking for is to be a little bit more on par with our DART districts, which is our comparable districts by size, demographics, and budget, and kind of get those percentages up from MCATs results. Another thing that we really want to start to see in terms of that low floor, high ceiling in this really equitable instruction practices, is we want to see closures in our opportunity and achievement gaps. And so for subgroups like our English learners, our special education students, students who identify as African-American or Black and Hispanic or Latino, we really want to see their achievements start to match the district as a whole. In addition, we want to see increased opportunity for our advanced coursework when, when students have a culminating math experience at the high school. And so we want to see a broader demographic of students taking AP courses. We want to see a representative demographic of students engaging in SATs when they get into the high school and opportunities like that. And so all of these things would be markers of success that are going to be sort of somewhere we can kind of see immediately, and we can see with common assessment, grade level and classroom to classroom, and others are going to take a few years, especially because we sort of have this black hole of state assessment data that we can't compare to from last year and, and possibly this year will be weird. So, so some of that will build over time, but we sort of have these markers in mind.
Great. Thank you very much. I look forward to kind of seeing how this comes about. Thanks.
Any other questions from committee members?
And just in terms of, you know, follow-up and, and just next steps, Val and Lindsay and I had, had talked a little bit with Doug around, just giving some time in the fall for the implementation process, but then coming back to school committee to give an update. We're thinking, I think we're thinking November, December makes sense, just to give a little bit of time. So, so more to come, but we-
We'll promise not to take this much time, make it shorter.
So I actually, I actually had two questions that I, I had saved to the end, and I hope they're, they're fast. You talked about rollout, and it's focused on K through eight slash Algebra nine. Is there any intention of, of changing the curriculum at the high school level? Is that not necessary? I, I just, I want to be clear on kind of how this impacts the high school, if, if at all.
It's a, it's a great question. So what we're doing at the high school, actually, because the high school is not under any current curriculum contracts, which means that like we don't currently have a purchase that we're waiting to expire. So K to six, the, the, the previous implementation that Wakefield engaged in expires in, in June. And so there was really this imminent need to have something in place for the fall for K to six. That's also the reason why grades seven and eight are sort of this official rollout the year after, because that's when their contract expires. They have one more year with the, the current materials that they have. And so at the high school, they have not had really like a curriculum contractor or things like that. They've had a long history of, of creating things in-house. They have textbooks, they've got lots of materials and a scope and sequence that they've been using for a long time. And so grade nine is going to roll out next year, and then each year after that, the scope and sequence and the materials will roll up. And so in the 22, 23 school year, it'll be Algebra I and Geometry. And then the year after that, it will also be Algebra II. And then by the time those students get to pre-calculus, while Illustive Mathematics does not have a pre-calculus program, there'll be some scope and sequence changes on what's covered in that class to kind of accommodate the changes in what was covered vertically in the previous courses.
Got it. Thank you. And I think my other question, Christine, is probably for you around budget. I believe that the earmarker on, on curriculum materials when we do a curriculum review is about $250,000. Is that correct?
In total, for the district, yes.
Okay. And so year one, year two, year three, we're not seeing that all kind of hit this coming, well, this year we'll see 137.
This year we'll see year one.
137, okay. And that kind of fits into the bucket of money that we have?
We're so fortunate. I think Val and Lindsay were talking about other products and how expensive upwards of $300,000. So this one, it just makes so much more sense.
Perfect.
We can afford it.
Yeah, that's great. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. I think we are good for this, to let all of you guys go. Thank you so much for taking-
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us.
So much time and walking us through. This was a great presentation.
Good job.
We appreciate the time. So one of the things that I, I hope that the committee picked up on is, and I know several people spoke to this, is, is the joy that you can, it, that just comes out of the teachers and the curriculum coordinators in regard to their work and how much they love it, right? But I, I hope that you saw at the end as well, a little bit of grit with Kevin, Kevin's question about, you know, what will success look like, right? They're, they are not shying away for a moment, okay, both in regard to the qualitative aspects and the quantitative aspects, right? So, you know, Lindsay quickly said, and that the, the smile was, was gone, where she just leaned in and said, you know, "We expect to see an increase in regard to the number of students meeting and exceeding the standard. We expect to be above the, the state average in, in our, in our assessments. We expect to, to close the achievement gap. We expect to increase accessibility or access that different populations of students have to our courses." So, so please don't miss that, that part of the presentation, because in, in my mind, I think it's one of the most important- So, so please don't miss that, that part of the presentation, because in, in my mind, I think it's one of the most important aspects. Because again, it's, it, it oozes out of them how much love they have for the content and how much love and respect they have for one another. But they also are fiercely, fiercely committed to this work. So thank you for your questions about the math curriculum. And, and I look forward to having them come back after they, they get the implementation up and running. And, and also following up with the committee. So there'll be more, more to come on that. Yep.
All right. Onto the calendar.
Yep. So this evening, we, we are proposing the 2021, 2022 calendar. We feel like, you know, we need to qualify the, the calendar that we're putting on the table. And so, and what I mean by that is there are a number of changes in the, in the calendar. There's also a number of things that we need to continue to pay attention to, right? So we've maintained for the last 14 months that the plans that we are making are subject to change at a moment's notice based on safety and, and the COVID environment that we are in and still not yet out of, right? So we are proposing a calendar that is with the best information that we have at this moment in time. And so we are anticipating that we're going to be, be able to come back to a full return to the schedules that we had prior to, or improve schedules, let's say, that we had, and I see Will smiling because he's working pretty hard with our high school administration on, on the high school schedule. But we're, we're looking forward to coming back to, to, to improve schedules in the, in the time that, that we're kind of spending on teaching and learning. The calendar that we're proposing this evening has teachers starting on September 1st and 2nd with Friday off ahead of Labor Day. Labor Day falls on the 6th of September this year and it's, it's late, it's a unique kind of calendar. And, and the way that the teacher's contract is, is written, it, it states when Labor Day falls on the 6th, the 7th or the 8th, we can start school the week before Labor Day, but teachers may not start before November 1st.
September.
Excuse me, September 1st. Did I say that right?
It's a little bit.
September 1st. I'm moving quickly. So September 1st. And so, so we have, so we've been through the calendar, I think a half a dozen times at this point. You know, we've looked at a number of different iterations. So with September 6th falling the way it is, Rosh Hashanah also falls on, starts on sundown on the 6th. It ends on sundown on the 8th. Our school committee policy is that there'll be no first-time events on, on holidays. So we would not start our first days of school after Labor Day on Rosh Hashanah. So what that, so what we're proposing is for our first teacher days to be on September 1 and 2, Wednesday and Thursday. And our first student day to be on Thursday, September 9th, right? We've heard from a number of different constituents and, and there's, no matter what calendar we create, if we come in ahead of Labor Day, I think that there are some families that have, you know, are looking to use that time for vacations. And if we come in after Labor Day, it pushes us a little bit later. But really what, what that's going to mean is that it's a, it's 180 days or 185 days because the Learn Anywhere opportunity for snow days is going to be off the table for next year. This is as of right now. The Commissioner of Education could change that. But as of right now, we're, we're creating a calendar the way we used to create a calendar, which is for 180 student days, we're building in five snow days, right? And so that's the calendar we're putting on the table. Would love to give the committee an opportunity to, to, to think about this. We can answer any questions that you may have. And, and we're also eager to let families know when the first day of school will be so that they can plan accordingly. So that's, that's the information in regard to the calendar. Happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Mike.
So Doug, I don't know if it's inappropriate to ask Will a question, but I'm just sort of curious, you know, are teachers feeling pretty good about this? I mean, I know some aren't going to be happy about it or, or how you want to address that. But if Will can answer it, that's fine. I don't care who answers the question for me.
So I, I, you know, I, Will has, Will sent a note earlier today. And I think we've worked very closely with Will. And no matter what decision we make, it's going to pose a challenge to somebody. It's going to pose a challenge to families and students. It's going to pose a challenge in, in some way. So I, I know that Will has shared that his preference is to come in, to have one professional day on the first and one student day on the second. And then to have students continue on the day after Labor Day, which would be September 7th and 8th. And so the distinction there would be first-time events and, and the school committee policy, right? I think the reason that we, we are proposing the 9th is that to have one student day the week before, and then if you're observing Rosh Hashanah, then you're going to be out of school for six days. So it just creates a tremendous gap for our students. And it feels, it just feels very compacted, very rushed. It also creates a little bit of a dilemma in regards to just having one professional day on the first. We, we've done that in the past and the feedback that we've gotten from some teachers is two days is preferable. One day is doable, two days is preferable.
And if I can just add to that, you know, that preference around the two days as well. I think historically we've given time back, you know, we've given, done kind of a combination of opening events and, or, you know, whatever gatherings we can even have this year, but just kind of an opening, opening ceremony of sorts. But then also, you know, some, some touch points on things and then some, some teacher time to be in their classrooms. But, but then that second day could really hone in on some content prep to get teachers by department or grade level with their groups and, and ready to, to maybe dig in some more curriculum-related PD. So I, I just want to echo the, the importance of the two days, because I think the first day gets easily eaten up with just that natural, just regathering of, of, by building and opening back up.
Okay. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
Any other questions from committee members? Tom.
Thanks. Doug, one question. Would it be, would it be reasonable, or maybe for Suzie, would it be reasonable for us to sort of think, think about this, especially with the new members and, and then, and then anticipate voting at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
So we have some time in the community, community can input, send us emails, suggestions, thoughts and that type of sort of thing.
I think it's the best way to go.
Could I, okay, thank you. That was question one. Number two, one of the things that we bumped into this year with regard to scheduling around some religious holidays, although not recognizing them as such, but, but making note of them. And I suggest, could we make note in next year's calendar, the days of Ramadan?
We can.
That would be April 2 to May 2, effectively the month of April.
Yep. We can certainly do that. So one of the things that we did this past year that we will do again is list all of the holidays.
I think we forgot to include that attachment on what we said.
Observed in the state. So that will be something that we will attach. But we will also kind of get onto, onto kind of the legend of our calendar on, on page one, not page two. But on page one, other, other observances that are really critical, right? Like what are first-tier things that teachers need to be attentive to and administrators as well? That affect and impact our students. So it's a really great suggestion. So thank you.
Because I think it's important for, you know, for us to, to one, to sort of remind ourselves as well as remind the community that we went through a fairly extensive conversation and some really deep research a year, a year plus ago with regard to how do we handle Good Friday, right? Because Good Friday had been traditionally on the calendar like forever. And it was recognized it was, it was certainly a religious holiday. It was a day off and, and all of that, right? So we went through a pretty comprehensive exercise and then made the determination that we weren't going to be recognizing any religious holidays other than making note of them. So therefore those type of first events, first type of events would not be scheduled, you know, either during those days or on those days. And then teachers would also need to be mindful not to provide, you know, projects due or homework due or testing or those sort of things. So I, I think the more that we, we can potentially stick to that, which is, is our policy. It's only going into year two really, I guess. And I think that's probably an important thing to have people appreciate that are we then recognizing, you know, Rosh Hashanah? Or are we moving the calendar around because of it? And we're really not, but we're seeking to make note of it and to not have a, a purposeful day, first day of an event on a holiday.
Correct.
Just, just to make sure that that's sort of something that, that, that we say out loud again, so we can appreciate the,
Correct.
the interesting dynamic that the real-world calendar provides us this year is kind of unique.
And I think a concern that we had just in looking at all the different ideas and like Doug said, someone's going to be disappointed.
Oh, yeah.
Even though, you know, to get a student day in on September 2nd, there's such a gap even to come back that it, September 7th would still, would feel like another first day. So it just didn't feel like it, it really matched what our intentions are and what we're trying to do to avoid a first-time event within a holiday. So I think that was a concern that we talked through just with, with that, with that scenario. Because it's, you know, a technicality, a first day getting in before the holiday, but it just still felt like there was too much of a gap. But the second day ultimately.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I, and I get that. I'm not trying to rationalize a way around that at all. I'm just trying to, trying to say that as people are thinking about this in the next, you know, two weeks or so, providing us with whatever impact. We, we want to be, be mindful of what the policy is.
Yeah.
And, and what we want to be, you know, mindful and respectful of. And we don't want really, I don't think anyway, or maybe I don't want, speak for myself, you know, a technicality around something that allows us to do one thing, you know, sort of just to, to get away with it. We really need to be mindful and respectful of these, these days and what they, what they represent for families.
I also would be remiss if I didn't include in this conversation the work that Will Cavanaris and the WA leaders have done in, you know, talking about what about, you know, what about iteration two? What about iteration three? What about iteration four? You know, so I think they have worked really hard at, you know, to try to create some combination, right? That, that might kind of strike the line. And, and I, I know that, I, I think that, like I said, Will's, Will's preference would be, you know, one and one. But I, I think he also understands the dilemma, right? And, and having one and one. And I think that he's worked really hard to create, you know, other schedules that were more than one-on-one, you know? And I know that that's not being captured here, but I, I want to recognize that to ju, just as part of this work, right? So, so that's where we're at. But I, I do think I like your, your comment, Tom. And I do think when we, when I said, for example, we're going to put this on the table, I think that the new committee members should give it some thought and think about really what's best for the community. And we can, we can maybe vote in the next meeting.
Right. Because there's a lot, there's, there's a longer backdrop to the planning around this year because of some of the unique calendar circumstances, meaning the real-world calendar, not necessarily us.
Yeah.
That are, that aren't as easy.
Yeah.
As in past years.
But, but the, but some of the challenges that, that present this year, just in the physical calendar, not the pandemic. That's a, that's a whole other issue. But some of the challenges that present this year will not present next year.
Right.
This is an anomaly.
It is.
Right? It's not a year-over-year kind of sequence that, that we're looking to replicate, right?
Right.
So, so that's an important piece. So I don't know if anyone else has any other questions.
Amy's got some questions.
Hi. Thank you for not making every Wednesday in November a half-day. The other thing, just at a quick glance, I didn't see a last day for seniors on here. And I didn't see a last day for kindergarten. Usually that gets backed up two days, is it for?
Typically, yeah, it's two days earlier than everyone else for, to fit in screening. Yep.
And will kindergartners have makeup snow days?
So they, they will.
Okay.
Right? They will. And so normally, so we haven't had a, a calendar with snow days on it for four years, right? Maybe five years now? So it's been quite a while. So, so with the five days added at the end, there's still some flexibility in when our last day will be, right? Because if we don't take those five snow days, we, we dial it back, right? So when we dial it back, we would then dial back, you know, when the last day or when the kindergarten screening would take place. But what would be on there, Amy, you're correct, is the last day for seniors.
I, I also think it's important to note the last day of kindergarten, because my daughter was actually the first year that they did that backing up. And I remember the nightmare when we found out later in the year. You know, for new parents that aren't familiar, I think it's important to note somewhere that this potentially could be the kindergarten or somehow communicated. I just don't want to see the same thing repeat.
I totally agree, because I think I missed that memo too and was scrambling in June for my daughter. Yeah, no, we, we did talk about that this morning, but just trying to make sure, maybe in the next update to, to get that. Last day for kindergarten and last day for seniors on there.
Thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
Amy Wall.
Just to piggyback off what Amy said also about the Doyle, is that going to follow the same as the kindergarten schedule or the regular schedule?
The Doyle would follow the regular schedule.
But the, but with the, the screening piece with the kindergarten. So yeah, they, they would match, Amy, they would match the kindergarten schedule, because they, they do end early for preschool screening as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I think it was important that, oh, Stephen, yep, those hands.
Two hands.
I'm sorry. I'll give, maybe I'll make my background flash or something. So I guess two questions to what, where Amy was saying about, Amy Lehman, about the first day or last day of kindergarten. If we could just put on proposed, you know, sort of just so that people know it's coming. And then that they, that they'd be aware of that buffer. And to her point, it doesn't necessarily call out, you know, you know that, we might know that. But yeah, for those first-time parents, that'd be key. And then are we coming on the tail end of this sort of block of years where we were going to have, like Labor Day was coming so late? Do we have, are we counting, is next year going to be so like the same? Or is this the last year of the craziness or is next year?
We look, we looked ahead. I think this is the last year, Stephen. We looked ahead when we, when we first created the calendar.
I think you're right, Doug.
Yeah.
We talked about that. Yeah.
In 2022, it'll be the fifth.
Fifth. Correct.
Right.
Which makes it a little bit more reasonable for scheduling.
Right. And so, right.
Any other questions? Okay. So I, I think it, it's important that we kind of went through this detail, because there are a lot of pieces that make this complicated that I think it's important as new committee members that, that you guys understand kind of what all those pieces are, because people are going to have opinions about this for sure. And so what I will do tomorrow is make sure that I send out the policy, a link to the policy that talks about the religious holidays and how those are to be.
Observed.
Observed. Thank you. Observed. I was going to say honored. Observed. So just so that, that you guys have that also as, as a reminder. And I would say that if you have any questions about kind of how this is working and what all the pieces are, certainly Tom and I are both pretty, and Mike, you may feel pretty knowledgeable about kind of all of the intricacies here. But we'll bring that back to the meeting on, the next meeting, which is on the 11th. And we'll plan to vote for it, vote to approve it on the 11th, so that families know what the plan is.
Yep.
I just have one more quick question. Next year, are we going back to a six-day cycle district-wide?
You're, we're laughing because our meetings, all of our meetings today really focused on a six-day schedule versus a five-day schedule. So we're, we're looking, Amy, at a five-day schedule for the district.
Oh, okay. Great. I know you did that once before and it was a cost thing.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Specialist's cost went up.
Yeah, I, I think we're, Christine won't allow us to spend any more money than, than, that has been budgeted for. So I think we're, we're kind of stuck there. Yeah.
Abiding math.
Okay. So we on to the last item?
On to the last item. And so the, the last item is the physical restraint policy. And so this is, this is kind of just an update is really what it is. So annually, our policy and communications subcommittee will get information from MASC. They'll send updates and say, for example, CMR 4602 has been updated. That's going to kind of trigger a policy update and it's also. And it's also part of our coordinated program review that we have with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. So the update to the physical restraint policy is really just a cursory update that we need to kind of post our new, our new policy, our updated policy into our policy book and have that be represented on our website. And so we are already practicing, as part of our practice, we use the new guidance that has been created in the new CMR. But to be consistent with that and follow through, we also need to update the policy and post it on our website.
So are we laying it on the table tonight?
So tonight, we're laying it on the table, next committee meeting is a vote.
Okay.
So in regard to, I should have explained that, I'm sorry that I didn't. You know, the term laying it on the table is something that I've learned here in this position as well. It's the process of giving information, allowing it to become part of a public observance or public document so that we can get any feedback that anyone might have or answer any questions that anyone might have in our next meeting. We address those things, and then we would either make edits or make a motion to vote and approve the policy. Do you believe, does that cover it, Tom, you think?
Yes, I would also say we should make a motion to delay it on the table officially.
Okay.
Right.
So I would offer to do that.
That would be great.
Make a motion that the school committee lay on the table, physical restraint policy number 102-R between now and May 11th.
Do we have a second? And then, Michael, I'll get your question in a second, but do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second while my hand's up.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, roll call, vote. Judy.
Ms. Vayer.
Yes.
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Engels.
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo.
Yes.
And Ms. Wall.
Yes.
Okay, now, Mike, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question, only because it's right next to it in the package. There's also the policy 207, the school committee reorganization. I didn't see it in the agenda, was that meant to be laid on the table tonight, too?
No.
No, I think that was for reference for when we were doing the nominations for the chair and the vice chair and kind of how it's supposed to happen. So I think Judy just provided that to us for background.
Because I, and I'll just put a vote in here, not a vote, a comment in here. I assume this would be a policy subcommittee thing, but it would be nice for us to have more than one day between the election and when new people come on to the school committee. So maybe we can talk about that at some other point in time.
We can definitely talk about that when we talk about the calendar of meetings for the next school year.
It may also help us, Michael, in regard to patting our softball team.
That's true, yeah, yeah, we're looking for a lot of premier athletes. I know Tom Markham is the premier athlete, I don't think many of you know that. I have had many conversations about that, so we're expecting big things from him in the game. Right, Tom?
Well, you better keep those expectations a little lower than that, Mr. Boudreaux. Although if we wanted to challenge the town council to a chess match, I'd be all in. And maybe some Star Trek trivia.
I was just going to say some Star Trek trivia.
Then we will dominate. Dominate.
Thank you.
All right, I think we have a budget item, Christine.
Just real quickly, we're so fortunate, I have a recommendation that the school committee accept with gratitude the following gift. It's from the Wakefield High School Girls Hockey Team, the boosters, $750.
Tom, do you want to read that?
Sure, I move the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $750 from the Wakefield High School Girls Hockey Boosters, a stipend to be used for the assistant coach for the 2021 winter season.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Judy, roll call, vote.
Ms. Vayer.
Yes.
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Mr. Engels.
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo.
Yes.
And Ms. Wall.
Yes.
Okay, so we're now at subcommittee reports, which is interesting because most of our subcommittee chairs are not here any longer. I can attempt, Tom, like I did last time, to give a quick update from a finance perspective. So Finance and Facilities met the 15th of April. So that's the last time we met, and we spent the majority of our time talking about federal funding, well, funding, state funding, federal funding. So we talked about the S R two grant that we're holding on to spend in the fall. There's S R three money that needs to be used by September 2024.
Yep.
And is about $800,000 that can be spent over three years.
Approximately.
Approximately, right. So, and then we started talking a little bit about the, oh, my goodness, I don't know the acronym for the federal.
A R P.
The A R P. Oh, yeah, America Rescue.
Plan.
Or Recovery, maybe Recovery Plan, not Rescue. So anyway, so we were talking a bit about that and just kind of the fact that that number is not necessarily solid yet. The guidance on how it can be used is not set yet, that that will be really run out of town, the town administrator's office with input from us. And just talking about how we think that money can be spent, how it needs to really focus on one-time expenses, not things that we would put in place and then have to cut when the money goes away. I think there's lots more that will come with that discussion over the coming weeks. But that was really, I think, the main focus of our last subcommittee meeting. And then we did talk a little bit about the dedication for the Blatts Park Burnett Field.
Yep.
Tom, and can you think of anything else from that?
No, I think you covered it well.
Okay. Do you have any updates from labor and personnel?
Sure, just two quick things that we have talked about. We've had one meeting since our last meeting, and I think we should have one before our next meeting. And the two topics that I think we want to be talking about, one is the superintendent had asked us to review the administrator salary schedules for the unrepresented staff members. And I know that you've provided us with that via email. So I think we should put that on the agenda as a follow-up from our last agenda, that it is time, this point in the year, when those sorts of contracts are being renewed or being expanded, and it's entirely appropriate that we review the non-represented staff members' contracts, contracted salaries, rather. And secondly, I think we should probably have a conversation around the calendar. And we should probably do that, obviously, before the next meeting. So we can work on scheduling a labor meeting between now and May 11.
Okay, sounds good. Student services.
Yeah, Suzie, we haven't met, we haven't met since our last meeting, so I know there's nothing new to report on that front since our last school committee meeting.
Okay, and then policy and communications, we literally have nobody. So you get, so you get, not nobody, sorry.
Yeah, I'll be happy to pick that up very quickly. And so in our last meeting, we just talked about the resolution and being able to share that with the new committee. So that was a piece that I think was really important to the school committee members in terms of closing out their work. The other piece of information that I think is really exciting is that Colleen Guida has reached out to some local colleges and I think has secured a communications intern for us that will work with school committee and also the administration as well. So we're super pleased about that. In fact, I think we might have two interns if we're fortunate, if things work the way we planned. But that's really going to help us in our communication with the community, and we're looking forward to reporting more on that.
Great. Okay, future dates and agenda items. Our next meeting is on May 11th at 7:30. Does anybody have agenda items that they want to kind of put on the table for consideration for our upcoming meetings? Amy Lehman?
As part, if we're going to vote on the restraint policy next meeting, as part of that, and I don't know if it's public knowledge, could we get just a number of how many staff are trained at each school on restraint? Isn't it a training that?
Yes, Amy, we do have that information, I could present that. So we use safety care as the program within the district, and we do have in-district trainers, it's like a train-the-trainer model, and then a number of staff represented at each building who hold that certification and renew. So we could provide that information.
Yeah, I'd just like that backup info, it's not too much, thank you.
Certainly.
Tom, did you have a?
I didn't.
Go ahead.
Thanks. So I guess for both Doug and Christine, maybe one of the topics that we've sort of annually had and some in the spring meetings, it doesn't have to be the next meeting, but maybe before the end of the fiscal year, before June 30 comes, is if we could have our food service director in. I know that we really, we really go through that. But I'd like to, certainly, I'm sure the community would want to hear more about what some of the plans for food service for next year. It's, we've had two very different years, last year and now that and this year.
Yep.
And how that's being handled. And we also now have a new municipal agreement with Reading that was approved by town council Monday night. So we're in, so maybe we could just have an update on all those things and what are we thinking about for pricing and menu selection and rotation of how food service may work.
Breaking news, I can just give you an update, meals are free again for another year.
Next year.
Yes.
Wow.
Well, then we should definitely have the food service director in.
So I, so we can make that part of the agenda and report that.
It doesn't have to be May 11, just what works, but before the end of the, before the summer.
So just to let the committee know, and the chair, as part of the agenda, would also like to invite our new director of special education to come in so that the committee can meet her.
Any other suggestions? Amy Wall?
I'm wondering about, I forget the name of the survey, I think it's the Risky Behavior Survey. Wondering if we can maybe get an update on that. I think that, I don't know if that was done recently, but if we can maybe get an update on that.
It's the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, Amy?
Yes.
It's being done this Thursday and Friday.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Yeah.
Does that give it enough time to go on the next meeting or no?
So the only thing that we would be able to share is just kind of the structure of the survey, but we would not have the results back.
Okay, is that, I don't, I mean, other people can weigh in and see if that's something, maybe we can see the structure of it. And then so we kind of have an anticipation of what to expect when they do the presentation.
Sure.
Excellent.
Is it fair to say that Catherine would be able to present on that before the end of the school year?
On the results?
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not sure. I'm not, I think it takes a little bit of time to compile those results. It might be a September.
I feel like they presented it in the fall in the past.
I think that they have, so I could check with Catherine.
On that note, I was speaking with Catherine about youth data, and she had indicated that there was some surveying that I thought had been done this spring that is different than that survey.
So there was an abbreviated survey that was created by David Robinson, Catherine, and Andrew Sidroni just to kind of gauge the emotional health of our students. So that was also presented by students to the faculty or will be presented by students and the faculty this Monday.
Could we get that presentation?
Of course, of course, of course.
That'd be great.
I would love to see the students present it to us.
Of course, yeah.
If they'd be willing. Okay, so we can, we'll add that one. We talked about Rosie Galvin, talked about food services. Anybody else have anything that they want to kind of put on the table? We're not going to promise that everything's going to happen on May 11, but it's good to get some things out there. Amy Wall?
I have another one, sorry. The money that's supposed to be coming in, and I forget if it's, you know, for seven years and we have two years to spend it or three years to spend it. I know that there's going to be certain guidelines of how that money can be spent. Is that something that would be available at the next meeting, what the rules and regulations are so we can kind of take a look at it? I think it'd be kind of important to see what we're working with and see. You know, I know Steve is the one that has the final say in where that money is going to go, but if we can kind of get ahead of the game and see what maybe we think would be a good presentation to show to him of what, how we want to use the money.
So we're anticipating that, but we don't know, we don't have a deadline yet of when that's going to be released.
Okay.
So I think we could say, if you have that information, Christine, that that could be part of your business reports.
Well, I report monthly.
Right.
The first meeting of every month, we report about where we're currently standing. And we talk about our S R money that's coming directly to the schools. But if we have any information about the A R P money, we'll let you know that as soon as we know.
Excellent.
Michael?
Just one other thing, I know it's definitely not the next meeting, but Doug, do we have any sense of when we might have a milestone event in regards to the high school construction that we could discuss? Is it May, is it September?
Our next meeting is Monday afternoon, May 3.
Right.
So we have an MSBA meeting just to follow up in regard to solidifying our project manager. So that's with them, May 3. So I can give an update in our next meeting, Michael?
Yeah, that'd be great. I get a lot of questions about the high school, and I have literally no answers.
Yeah.
And maybe we won't even after the update, but just curious.
Yeah, we're meeting all of our milestones. The next one is the selection and kind of affirming our project manager. And then after that, we will work toward an architectural firm to do a feasibility study. So, but right now, the next step Monday is just to solidify our project manager. And maybe Bob Shiroli, it would be best to report on that in our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
So we already have a full agenda for. Nicely done, nicely done.
And I'm going to add to that, I think, an update on where things stand with graduation, just at that point. I think it would be good to just have the committee updated on that as we learn more and more.
Happy to do it.
And then my last, my last item is, at some point, revisiting kind of the commitment, I believe, that we have made as part of the resolution around Native American education.
Mm-hmm.
And.
We had talked to our curriculum coordinators, and the plan was to do a presentation in June.
June, perfect.
Yep, so we were thinking, yeah, end of May, June, that's great, but just kind of like a proposal and timeline outline for a planning year for next year.
Sounds good. Okay.
Suzie, I just have one more item?
Yeah.
At the next meeting, if we can talk about our softball team training practice.
Our practice schedule?
The one color rusher will be.
Exactly, that's more important.
Okay, I think with that, I'm going to move to school committee comments. Stephen, if you want to go first?
Sure, thank you. I don't know if you guys did this on purpose, but for my first school committee meeting, we had to talk about math and music, and there was like offers of a softball game. Secretly, I'm elected now, so I can say one of my allure is was that I heard I got to play in the boys and girls dodgeball game possibly if I got on a board, so kudo, like gay. So softball, also awesome. And just to that, to the best community for music, it's, I just thought that was awesome, getting that email. It was one thing that really Mara and I loved about Wakefield is just its dedication to the arts. And I mean, that, it wasn't just handed out. It was like one of, you know, 12 communities in Massachusetts that have that distinction. And it just says a lot. So couldn't be prouder of the group, you know, that sort of contributes to that. And it was just wonderful. And the idea when we were going through the math curriculum, they could have gone on longer. I didn't want to tell them because they did seem so excited, and I didn't want to drain everybody else's day. But they could have gone on longer, that was fantastic. And the idea of being able to serve a subject like math, which can be challenging, being able to serve that equitably, is just sort of, I don't know, it's awesome. I'm not quite sure of the right word, but it's helpful. And I know that there are families that have challenges with it. I know they're both, you know, getting to know the material or expanding beyond it. Like there are definitely challenges on both ends. Like there are definitely challenges on both ends of that. And seeing that be addressed was great. So, thanks. It was great, man.
Thanks, Stephen. Mike?
Yeah, I certainly welcome the four new members, although I have to give Kevin an asterisk on his new designation, but I'm going to give him the benefit of the doubt here. So a lot of great new perspectives to bring to the committee. You know, I've been here 10 months, so I don't have a lot of fun, anybody. I mean, I'm pretty sure Tom has more time served than the rest of us combined. Kevin might swing us over the threshold on that one as well. But welcome to all of you. You know, we're looking forward to moving forward and, you know, focusing on creating the best learning environment possible for our kids. And that's great. So, you know, I just wanted to say welcome, and we're looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Amy Wall?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So one, the information distribution that we get, I know obviously today, you know, is a different situation than the meetings normally are. How soon do we normally get the distribution of information for the upcoming meeting?
Judy, do you want to answer that, or do you want me to answer it?
Well, we create the agenda the week before the meeting, and that goes out, and when I post it, it goes to all of you. I copy all of you. So then you know exactly what's coming. And then I prepare a packet at the end of that week. And I've been getting it out to you on Saturdays where I'm off right now, but I was, I work full-time. So it was just easier to have a Saturday. And you all get the packet of materials. So you have the packet, you know, like two or three days before the meeting to go through everything.
Okay, perfect.
The agenda has to be posted by the Thursday before the meeting, is that right, Judy?
I do it on Thursday evenings at the very latest. I mean, if we could do it a little bit earlier, that would be, you know, great, but everybody's so busy. As long as I get it there so that they see it in town hall by 8 o'clock Friday morning, we're okay.
And then another question. I had a parent ask me this question, and I don't know if this is us or not, or if maybe somebody can help me steer her in the right direction. She had brought up a point to Demograph at the rec department about trying to start a volleyball camp or league or something for the middle school. And from what she was told is that the school, the high school and the middle school, they're not allowed to use the facilities. I don't know if that's a COVID thing, an insurance thing, or what the deal is with that, but didn't know if anybody has an answer for that, or who else I could ask to try to get an answer for her.
If it's a, if it's a club sport or a rec department-run activity, we're not, the schools are not open for, you know, for kind of lease. So we're not opening up gym spaces for other activities right now because of COVID, Amy. So, and so, but if there's a desire, so if the question is about middle school athletics, I think the next, the next best person to talk to would be Brendan Kent.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
And like the others had said, I look forward to working with everybody. This is, you know, I'm excited to be here. I think this is great. Thank you.
Amy Lehman?
Hi. I'm enjoying everyone's sense of humor. I never thought I would giggle this much at a school committee meeting, so thank you for that. The other thing, I think the comment that at the end of the meeting is, my comments are probably going to mostly if any of the local schools want to promote an event or something good that they're doing at their school, I'd like to share that. So tonight, I'll start with the Walton School, since that's what I'm most familiar with. The Walton School brought back their student council this year, which was great. And the student council is working on monthly themes. And the monthly theme for, it's a craft theme, for April was, each student got a word bubble, and they had to write down an inspiring quote, and the teachers put the quotes up on the wall. So I'll share one that I thought was really cute. It's from Ellery. And Ellery had a Dolly Parton quote, and it says, "I always thought if you see somebody without a smile, give them yours." So thank you, Ellery.
Thanks, Amy. Kevin?
I'm just really, just thank you for the warm welcome from Mr. Boudreau, and congratulations to our new chair and vice chair. Look forward to the upcoming year.
Thanks, Kevin. Tom?
Oh, thanks. Let me also just, again, to welcome and congratulate our four new members on election victory yesterday. Very much, I look forward to a productive and engaging year focused on the students and teaching and learning. We have a lot to do, but it's a pretty exciting time. So I very much, I look forward to our year together. I want to thank the committee for their trust with regard to being our vice chair for the year. I'll take the role very seriously, and I am grateful for that vote. Want to also thanks, it's probably a pretty unique, you know, mathematically speaking with regard to the committee, it's probably unique, not only for Wakefield, but probably really any community to have four new members at any one time. But where I'm going with that was really wanting to, again, thank and for the outstanding, you know, service and devotion from our outgoing members, you know, Amy Purcell, Colleen Guida, Darcy Burns, and Greg Leakos. I think they have really been contributors in a very difficult time. Certainly, certainly Amy Purcell had, as we've all shared before, one heck of a year to be chair, and she just led us so incredibly well and professionally, and I certainly thank her for that. And just, you know, we're down one, Amy, but we're up two. So that's, you know, that's kind of cool, too. Anyways, thank you all, and congratulations.
So I'll close with some more about the math that kind of gets, adds on to what you were saying, Stephen. I think what struck me most about that presentation earlier today was the idea of being able to support kids who are, who need additional challenge and kids who may struggle. And to be able to, to be able to serve them and teach them at the same time with the same materials is just so cool. And I think of math and math being one of those subjects that for many kids, it's, I can't do it. And that it's very, it's, it's black and white, that I can't, I either can or I can't. And the way that it sounds like this math is going to be taught is, everybody can access it, and everybody will likely be able to kind of be able to answer the questions. And to build the confidence with kids, starting from the youngest levels up, to know that it's not, I can or can't do it, but my answer is different than your answer, to me feels like it could be incredibly empowering. And so I am really, really excited about what we heard about tonight, and I'm excited about what it has the potential to do for the district because it feels like just a really encouraging way to teach math to our kids and for them to feel some confidence and to build some confidence and to build that growth mindset, which I think is sometimes very difficult for kids to kind of see that they are capable. So I was, I was really, really pleased by that presentation and super excited about to see, to see where it's going to go. I did realize when she, when Lindsay was going through the timeline, that my children will never get to experience that because they're a little bit too old. But I'm sure I'll hear lots about it from my friends about their kids. And then I'll just, I'll close on, I left the house saying to my husband, "I think I might be home by 9:30." Like, I think this is going to be a pretty quick meeting. And I pride myself on running really good meetings that are really tight. And here we are, three hours in. But to me, it wasn't about kind of managing the meeting, it was having really good conversation and hearing really good content and having you guys ask good questions. And I'm not going to make any promises about short meetings anymore because it shouldn't be about short, it should be about substance. And I think we had a really good first meeting as a group, and I look forward to many more. And I think that's it. So I think we'll make a motion to adjourn.
As we shall.
Okay.
I move the school committee adjourn the meeting of April 28, 2021.
Let's let a newbie second at this time.
There we go. Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. Judy?
Ms. Bayer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Thank you.